I am now called to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, March 10th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. We received a notification from Commissioner Seaver that she will not be able to attend this VOC meeting this evening due to the injury, and we need a motion if we're going to excuse her.
Motion to excuse.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuza.
Thank you. Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Kirk Snare from the St. Timothy Lutheran Church. If you please stand and remain standing for the pledging of allegiance.
The Lord be with you. Gracious Lord, Lord of hosts, we give you thanks for this beautiful town that you've given us to live in, help us to be good stewards of it. We ask that you would be with our commissioners, give them wisdom, and guide them with your counsel. We ask that you would also watch over our children, protect us from the evil one, and guide us in ways that bring you glory. We ask all of this in the name of the Most High God, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Alahuza?
Here.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Here.
Commissioner Seaver is absent in excuse. Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Donovan?
Here.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our VOC and CRA meeting tonight. We are now going to the public comments on the items that will not be discussed tonight. If anyone has any comments, please come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you'll be given four minutes.
I'm at 811 South Distant Avenue, and Ms. Dabbs is on the corner right there, 803. I'm just concerned about the speed limit, or where they have speed bumps along there, because that, I'm looking at the road, it's going toward Ms. Dabbs' house, but I say, suppose you have an idiot coming speeding along there and can't stop and miss Ms. Dabbs' house and go into mines. I'm concerned about that. Are y'all prepared to put some speed bumps along there? In Clearwater, they got a roundabout, you know, a roundabout can slow the traffic down too, because early in the morning, I walk with this older gentleman from the trailer park, some tiny walk, and threw a bus along there. I'm just concerned about the citizen. I'm not here to raise hell, but I'm just concerned about the citizen and the speeders. You know, if y'all could put this, one of the thing that, know how fast you're going, maybe that'd help too. And then, they don't have no excuse when the officer give them a ticket for speeding, slow it down. I'm thinking about if they started from where Dick said, some people gonna try it, they're gonna open up there, and man, they won't be able to stop. I'm sure gonna be a stop sign there. And the water, right now, my house set up high, is they gonna put water drainers along there? Because you know that water go along pushing it? I'm concerned by stuff like that, you know? And it look good, I can't wait till the road started, but I want to be safe for everybody. And a big improvement, it gonna be a big improvement to the area, but I'm just concerned about that. So if y'all could address that, I appreciate every last one of y'all. No matter perfect, no matter perfect, but I'm just concerned about that speed. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments?
Pier de Lacus, 514 Ashland Avenue, and I think Reverend Warren did bring up some valid considerations as that road progresses to be built, and in fact, part of my notes here will maybe address that a little bit later. But I do have a couple things I want to go over. First is meetings. Access and process. Access. Sometimes your meetings go beyond nine o'clock. Some people, there's not a lot here, maybe they're waiting for the CRA to come later, but y'all have the doors set to lock at nine or a little before, and if someone wants to come in, the meeting's still going on, you can't get in. I've had to text people of this board to have somebody come open the door for me if it's after nine. So first off, access to meetings. Process. Mayor Alahuza, you've been on this board long enough to know that you don't get two bites of the apple during public comments, and you know exactly what I'm talking about. Now, ironically, I've spoken with Ms. Lemmons here, and she's doing a valiant effort to help our citizens. I don't know if y'all got this in your mail today? They still got a holiday store, but that don't help the people who walk from the neighborhood. They already don't have the access to go to holiday. So, that's where I come into my Pioneer Challenge. George, and George of Pioneer Development, hear me now, I know you're not here, but this is my challenge to you. You say you love Tarpon, but yet you go out and you rape virgin land to put in homes. If you go out by the fire station water plant, they've cleared out a whole bunch of areas for townhouses, and they're trying to do the same thing in Eastlake. My challenge to Pioneer Development is to get with Ed Hoffman, get with Karen, get with the Banks, go in and buy the Manatee Village Plaza. Tear it down, put in a design that would be functional, you can put residences there. That's my challenge, because that area gets neglected. We have people coming up, "Oh, you don't help the Sponge Docks, you do too much for the downtown." Well, Reverend Warren's neighborhood, they're the ones who walk to the Save-A-Lot. What about them? So we need action, and those are my points in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Do I have anybody who's willing to donate two minutes of their time for me to do a public Thank you. Well, I last left off with the transcripts that we were trying to request for Mark LaCorrus. We have not received them from the city yet. I don't know why, what's taken so long to receive them? We'd like to be able to verify, you know, your education, as well as everything moving forward with your credentials. I was able to pull the salary for Mr. Mark LaCorrus, and I don't know if anybody knows his actual salary for 2019, it's $130,622.13, which actually a 3% increase from the 2018, which was $126,817.60. I've been informed by some city workers that when they, before they can even receive an increase in any type of salary, they must get an annual review, and we haven't had your annual review yet. We're still, is there stuff in the works of it? I don't know what's going on, but we need to be able to hold people accountable, especially for the actions and the faults, especially with our city management. As far as the pension, and I also mentioned the salary, because I requested this pension from the Tarpon Springs Police Department. We have not received that yet either. I don't know why the police department's holding it. We'd like to be able to show the income that you're making on your monthly pension to show the double dipping. Now, double dipping isn't necessary, it's not illegal, but speaking ethically, I don't think it's ethical for us to be, the people of Tarpon Springs, on our, on the back of our taxpayer dollar, to be double dipping on us. It's only supposed to be used in an emergency. For example, a school resource officer, there's not enough officers for our police department to send a school resource officer to the city, so what do we do? We hire somebody who's retired, and we agree that we will pay them while they receive their pension. It's actually in the case of emergency. Mark, your double dipping is not in the case of emergency or necessity. And Mayor, last time I got off the stage, you made another public comment about me not representing the Greek community. If you're not going to engage in conversation or questions that I ask, that, and I have plenty of questions to ask, then please do not comment after I get done. Please just say thank you for your comments and move on, you know? But in fact, I do represent the Greek community, I do represent a portion of them. I represent a portion of a lot of people who have their opinions and really want to speak out the truth, you know? Did you forget to mention that the people of SEMI? Exactly. The ones where you left the mayor over there, you were supposed to meet the mayor in SEMI in Galimnos, and you left the Board of Commissions there by themselves, they remember that. So, and what we're trying to get at here, all this is all because our city manager at the time of this chief, he hired some dirty cops, hence Public Gas, Officer Gassen. And here we have, from November 15th, 2002, Mark LaCorrus gave a written reprimand for not processing the crime scene for Officer Gassen. That was 2002. We got an officer who just sits there, completely violates general orders time and time again, and here we go, Chief Coshin just babysitting, covers him up. It's no different because he's part of the LaCorian era, he's part of the LaCorian way. Everybody who's been hired from Mark LaCorrus, the ones who are sitting here at the top of management, are the most corrupt ones. We also have September 2nd, 2011, as well as September 22nd, 2011. Mr. Gassen went onto the scene of the Tarpon Springs High School with his, with his police vehicle car, actually tried to act like an officer when he wasn't supposed to, had three general order violations, and if that was happening today's day, everybody, all the parents of the Tarpon Springs High, they'd be getting text messages, the school was on lockdown. They would've got it twice in one month, actually, the whole North County, to be a matter of fact. And Officer Coshin just gave him a two-day unpaid suspension.
Sir, your time has expired.
Thank you. We'll be back.
Thank you.
I said I wasn't going to speak tonight. This young man seems to be intelligent, he's a good speaker, but do not give India statements that you cannot back up with paperwork and facts. Double dipping, I hate that word. When you've worked as many years in the city and put in your time, you've earned your pension. You should not judge a pension with a new job and what someone makes. That's dirty, and that's nasty. I don't like it. People see it on TV, you know, and you come up here, if these accusations are right, then bring the proof so we can see. If you can't get your answers, go to the state attorney's office, file a complaint, go to eight on your side, and let's see what's really happening. Don't make accusations with no backup. It hurts the community, it hurts the Greek community, it hurts the non-Greek community, it hurts us every which way in this town. We must have facts, we have to know what we're doing and what we're saying. If it's the truth, then it'll come out, and you'll be vindicated. But until then, don't come and make accusations or talk about people's salaries. I'm going to be 78 in a few weeks, I want a job. I can't go to my old job anymore. It'll kill me. I want a job. I have a pension, two pensions, and social security. So if I go out and work, are you going to come where I'm working and say, "Fire her because she's double dipping"? No. That's a, that's someone's right. And to say that someone's dirty, give us the facts, get the paperwork, go to the St. Tampa Tribune and tell them this is it, publish it. But don't come up here and make accusations where everyone's going to hear, and we don't know if it's the truth. And Mr. LaCorrus, congratulations, you've got a job and a pension. I want to borrow $10 from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other comments? Any other public comments on the items that will not be discussed tonight? We have none, thank you. I have two announcements, Vivek. The agenda item number 12, the sign code, is deferred to a different date, and that will be announced. Also, item number six has been removed because the vendor withdrew his bid. So we're now going to item number one, which is the Greek Independence Day proclamation. The City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation. Whereas, as we commemorate the 199th anniversary of Greece independence, the celebration of Greek Independence Day on March 25th, 2020 draws inspiration from one of the holiest days for Greek Orthodox Christians. And whereas, on a Greek Independence Day, we celebrate our special ties of friendship, history, and shared values with Greece. And whereas, Greek Americans have made a mark in every field by enhancing our culture, enriching our commerce, and defending our freedom. And whereas, their strong record of public service has also strengthened our democracy, and their contributions have made America a better place. And whereas, Sunday, March 22nd, 2020, has been chosen for the Greek Independence Day parade in Tarpon Springs. And whereas, and now therefore, Chris Alahuza, by virtue of the authority vested in me, as the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim March 25th, 2020, as Greek Independence Day, and I'd like to ask Mr. Sissoue to come forward to receive the proclamation. Thank you, Mr. Sissoue. Do you'd like to say a few words? Okay. Thank you, thank you. Are there any commission comments? Are there any public comments on these items? I hear none, now that we go to the concern agenda. Item number two is the minutes. A, September 3rd, 2019, regular session. B is September 10th, 2019, regular session. C is January 14th, 2020, regular session. D, January 28th, 2020, regular session. E is February 11th, 2020, regular session. F, February 18th, 2020, the executive session. Number three is a special events. A is a salsa, Cinco de Mayo, May 2nd, 2020. B is flags for Frida, May 16th, 2020. C is Athens by night, June 13, and September 12th, 2020. Four is to authorize execution of an agreement for spring buy all regulars. Number five is the award file number 200067, NAM, single source purchase of Ford original equipment manufacturer automobile parts and services. Number six has been removed from the agenda. Number seven is the increase file number 190102BJJ, R.O. Facility Generator Distribution Upgrades. Any of the items that you'd like to pull?
What did you say the reasoning was behind six being pulled, Mayor?
Yeah, the, he just withdrew.
They were through the big, because they're no longer doing the state of Florida.
I just have to find somebody else.
Thank you. Which is bad news, because they put on a great show, as we've seen from the last five.
You'll find somebody.
We could do it, right?
Any, any item that you'd like to pull? Thank you. Any, any comments, any commission comments? Are there any public comments on these items? I hear none, I need a motion.
Move approval.
In roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuza.
Yes. And now we're going to special concern agenda. Item number eight is to increase file 18006BRS, Utility Rehabilitation and Construction Services Staff Report.
Good evening, Paul Smith, Public Services Director. This item is our utility rehabilitation and construction services contracts. It has to do with construction for our water lines, sewer lines, and reclaimed water lines. We've got a few projects, urgent ones, that we need to complete, and it's going to go over our current authorization with the board. So this item, we're requesting you to increase that authorization by 300,000, so we can complete these two projects. These include a manhole on MLK, right near Safford Avenue, you might have noticed it driving through there, it's, it's starting to sink, and it's going to be a pretty major project to get everything replaced and relifted there. And then the other project, we've got a water line on Division Street, this is over by Athens, and a sewer manhole on that street, so the total of those projects is going to be over the, the limit we currently have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I am very glad that we're going to replace those water lines, because the water needed to be improved there. Appreciate that very much. Any commission comments, Vice Mayor Terapany?
Thank you. Paul, I'm assuming that the funding in its entirety is coming out of these three accounts listed below, water distribution, sewer, and lift stations?
That's correct.
Not just the additional 300,000?
That's correct. It's all the water and sewer fund.
Got you. And then, the water line on Division, are we looking at the sewer line there too, or just the water line?
Just the water line, but we also have a sewer manhole at the top of the hill that we want to repair, so that's part of that project.
Got you. Thank you. I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Have you seen you? You'd be fine.
I just had, my only question was, in here it mentions how we prioritize underground utilities in need of repair, and I just had a question as to that process. How are we prioritizing our underground utilities? Is it geographical, is it just based strictly on need? Can you elaborate on that?
Sure. It's really a combination of many things, but it starts with the staff that works with it the most, which is our water conveyance division. These are the staff that repair the pipes, and so they look at work orders, where they've been out there for repairs. In this case, also water quality. We've gotten complaints about water having a color to it, that's usually if the pipe is corroding badly, so that'll be another thing to put it higher up on the list. Other things may be, like you mentioned, there might be areas with certain materials of pipes that just make them prone to failure, so we put all these factors together, knowing we've got more need than we could have funding to stay within our rates, but we prioritize and do the most urgent things first.
Thank you. That is my only question, seems like a good project.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? I need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
In roll call. Mr. Smith, thank you.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuza.
Yes. We are now going to the item number nine, which is the ordinance 2020 dash zero three, regulation of parking in electric vehicle spaces. This is a second reading, and Mr. Attorney, if you please read the ordinance.
This is ordinance 2020 dash zero three, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, meaning section 18 dash 12 fines established of Division One, generally of Article Two, Parking, Stopping, and Standing, of Chapter 18, Traffic of the Code of Ordinances, to establish a fine for non-electric vehicles parked within any parking space specifically designated for charging an electric vehicle and providing for the effective aid of this ordinance. That was the second and final reading of ordinance 2020 dash zero three. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title "Only on February 28th, 2020." In your backup, you'll see that there were answers to your questions relative to, at least one of the commissioners, relative to wanting to reference, a cross-reference the city code with city or state statute. The police department has done that, and the attachment behind the ordinance, that is not part of the ordinance, but it's just additional backup to answer any questions relative to that connection between our code and the state statute. I'd be happy to answer any other questions for you if you have them.
Thank you. Mr. LaCorus, staff report, do you have any new information?
No new information, Mr. Chief.
No new information.
Okay. Any commission comments? Commissioner Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I wanted to thank staff for getting some data back to me that I'd asked about. I mentioned at our last meeting that I just wasn't seeing the parking spaces being used as often as we would like, so I went back and, our staff went back and got that data for me. So since the units came online, which was last March and last June, we're actually tracking the charging sessions, which a charging session is just when one person parks in the spot and uses the charger. So just some data to back up not seeing them being used, and keep in mind, a few of these have been open for a year now. And keep in mind, a few of these have been open for a year now. City Hall has only had 45 charging sessions. Court Street has had 180 charging sessions, and the Splash Park has only had 10 charging stations. So that's just something to keep in mind moving forward.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? You're none? Chair will obtain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuza.
Yes. Next is item number 10, is the Resolution 2020 dash zero four. This is the application 19 dash 167, Conditional Use for Short-Term Residential Rental for 609 Hope Street. Item number 10 and number 11 are quasi-judicial. The City Attorney will read the titles, and he will explain the quasi-judicial process.
Yes, Resolution 2020 dash zero four, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application 19 dash 167, requesting conditional use permit to allow the operation of a seasonal short-term residential rental at 609 Hope Street, located on the west side of Hope Street, between Hill Street and Cross Street, in the T4A District of the Special Area Plan, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of Resolution number 2020 dash zero four by title only. I'm going to go ahead and read the quasi-judicial procedures. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts as a, in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the Board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the Board is required to make, by law, to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The Board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the Board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the Board is required by law to find against the applicant. With that being said, anyone that's going to speak on this item number 10, I need you to stand up, raise your right hand, and be sworn under oath. Anyone that's going to speak. Swear that, swear that the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. So now it'd be time for staff to make its presentation. Mr. Serna?
Good evening, Louis Serna, presenting staff comments. This is a request for conditional use approval to operate a seasonal short-term rental of an existing single-family residence located at 609 Hope Street. It is in the T4A District of the Special Area Plan. Staff has reviewed the request for compliance with the standards of review for conditional uses of the Land Development Code, and we find that it does meet the standards. I won't go through all the standards, but I'll hit the highlights of it. The property is in the Sponge Docks Character District of the City Special Area Plan. This is an area that encourages activity of a mixed, and a mix of uses. The proposed use meets the definition of a seasonal short-term rental and is located close to the Sponge Docks tourist-oriented area. So primarily because of its location and what's surrounding it, we do find that this does meet the criteria of the code. The property is not in a historic district, and the conditional use is not expected to adversely affect adjoining property values, again, because of its location. The notices, notices have been sent to adjacent property owners, and as of today, the staff has not received any responses to the notices. The Planning and Zoning Board heard this item on February 24, 2020, and recommended approval of the conditional use with the conditions recommended by staff. And our recommendation is for approval based on the compliance with the standards of review with the following conditions. First is that the property shall remain a single-family residence rented for a single fam, for a single living unit. Two, the building shall be maintained with the following: one smoke detector in each sleeping area, one smoke detector in the common hall between sleeping areas. Smoke detectors shall be of a 10-year lithium battery style, and a fire extinguisher shall be provided and shall have an annual inspection. Third condition is that the applicant shall obtain and maintain a City of Tarpon Springs Business Tax receipt for the use. Again, staff is recommending approval subject to these conditions, and I'd be glad to answer any of your questions.
Any questions from the commission?
Yes, Louis, thank you. This property is located close to the Sponge Docks, but also it's a residential area. We haven't got any response from, any questions from the neighborhood?
That's correct.
Okay. Also, does the applicant understand and agrees with the conditions recommended by the staff?
I believe so. The applicant is here and can answer that.
Okay. Well, we'd like to hear from that as well when the time comes. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Yes, Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, this one's specific, so I understand if you don't have it on hand, but how much is the business tax license?
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
Like, is there like a range or something like that for our short-term rentals that we're charging them?
Yeah, I'm not sure what that amount is.
That's fine. Can you just get that to me at a later date? Just email me sometime.
Yeah, we'll get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, is the applicant here and wishing to make a presentation?
I just have a comment.
I'm sorry.
That's all, just a comment, not a question. I think Commissioner Donovan, it's about 130 bucks for a business license.
Thank you.
But it does vary in terms of your class of business. But I just wanted to make a comment saying that it's encouraging to me to see the short-term rentals popping up more so prevalently in town. And I think that's due in large part to the demand being through the roof for contemporary lodging within the urban core where people can, you know, walk to, walk and eat and take advantage of all the things that we have to offer. So we're seeing it more and more, and I think that it's possibly making the areas in town where we have legal zoning or zoning through conditional use for these Airbnbs. I believe it's making it more valuable as it relates to that. So it's encouraging for me to see, and I'll support this application.
So is the applicant here today and wish to make a presentation? Yes, sir. If you'd step forward, come to the podium, tell us your name. You have been sworn under oath. Make any presentation that you would like to make to the commission.
Good evening. My name is John Corless, and I am the applicant and the owner of the home at 609 Hope Street. I just wanted to come in and say I'm thrilled to be here in Tarpon Springs. I'm a transplant from Denver. And I just have fallen in love with Tarpon Springs. I never knew it was on the map until I kind of just happenstance found this home. So it's a great, great property, great location, and I'm excited to be able to offer it to transient vacationers. So just wanted to introduce myself and say thank you.
Hang on, sir. Are there any questions?
Yes, I had a question that I ask. If you agree with the conditions recommended by the staff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now's the opportunity for anybody in the public who wishes to step forward and make comment or a presentation. Please do so now. There being none, is the, does the city want to make any type of closing argument? And specifically, are you interested in tendering into evidence a staff report?
Yeah, no closing arguments, and yes, we'll tender the evidence in the staff report.
Back to me?
Yes, sir. It's back to you.
Do we have any commission comments, questions? Chair will obtain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Roll call. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuza.
Yes, thank you. Next is item number 11. This is the Resolution 2020 dash zero five, Conditional Use for Hill Street Parking Lot. City Attorney, if you please read the resolution.
Mayor Commissioners, Resolution 2020 dash zero five, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application 19 dash 109, requesting a conditional use permit and associated site plan to allow for establishment of a surface parking lot on 0.15 acres of land located on the north side of Hill Street between Hope Street and Roosevelt Boulevard in the T5C, Dotka Canes Avenue, Main Street, Transact District, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. There was a reading of Resolution 2020 dash zero five by title only. Anyone that's wishing to speak on this particular item other than staff who's already been sworn in? If you'd stand up, raise your right hand, and be sworn under oath if you have, going to make any type of presentation. You swear that the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Staff presentation, please.
Oh, yes. As the resolution states, this is a conditional use approval for a permanent surface parking lot. The property is located on the, on the north side of Hill Street between Hope Street and Roosevelt Boulevard. This property is in the T5C District. Staff has reviewed this, again, for the standards of review for the conditional use that are in the Land Development Code, and our findings are in the staff report. Again, I'll just hit the highlights. This is in the Sponge Docks Character District of the City Special Area Plan, like the other one. This is the tourist-oriented commercial area. It encourages activity, commercial activities and a mixture of uses. The general area is occupied mainly by commercial development and waterfront uses. There are also multiple private parking lots designated to accommodate tourists in this area. Again, that is primarily because of the location factors and the proposed use. The staff finding is that the request does meet the standards of the conditional use approval. This is also a site plan review, which was reviewed by the Technical Review Committee on December 5. And they recommended that the item be forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Board for review, but it does meet the requirements of the site plan. Staff is recommending approval of the conditional use and the site plan. And the approval is subject to the following recommended conditions. One, the, an engineer certification of the existing retaining wall on the north side of the property/parking lot shall be submitted attesting to the wall's structural integrity to support the existing fill and proposed permanent parking lot use. Two, the applicant shall supply an updated letter of exemption from the Southwest Florida Water Management District for the use of the proposed geotextile parking surface. Three, stripings shall be installed across the entrance exit driveway to mark crosswalk access connecting to the existing sidewalk. This delineation shall be shown on the final set of plans submitted for building permit. Four, the developer is responsible for acquiring all jurisdictional permits and for meeting the minimum criteria of the Land Development Code. And five, the construction plans shall be consistent with the site plan. All requisite fees attendant to the project shall be paid in accordance with the Land Development Code. The Planning and Zoning Board heard this item on February 24. There was one member of the public who spoke regarding the application. That, that information is in your packets. The Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of Resolution 2020 oh five with the conditions that I mentioned. We have not received any other public input on this. And again, I'd be glad to answer your questions.
Any commission questions? Commissioner Carr?
Louis, I've just got a quick question. I see there's like one tree in the whole site plan. And I thought there was, there's a requirement to have at least 36 inches around the parking lot. But is it pertaining to only where the lights would be shining and not pertaining to the whole parking lot? Does that ring a bell to you?
Oh, what was the question?
So it has to do with vegetation? So there's a 36-inch requirement to be around the parking lot?
Yes.
So since the lights are going into a retaining wall, does that make it exempt in this situation? And then the rest of the parking lot not require any landscaping?
Oh, gosh. I know there was a recommendation for the species along the frontage road.
Pat McNeese, Principal Planner. The way we looked at this, Commissioner Carr, the Transit Code landscaping requirements are fairly minimal, as you might know. So the one tree satisfies the Transit Code. The Transit Code also requires a three-and-a-half to eight-foot screen of parking. Planning recommended that that might be an issue in this area because of the sidewalk, heavy pedestrian traffic. But we could ask the applicant, but I'm sure if there's some sort of screening that you'd like for the parking, that we can, we can work something out on screening.
Yeah, just on the, I mean, on the south side, I think there's an opportunity for lights. I mean, it's ironic that the same house that we just approved for a short-term rental is like right in the backyard of this. But if you were to pull out with your lights on at night, it would go like right in their backyard. So that's, that's a concern I have because of the residential area right next door, basically. So I do have some concerns about that south side. The rest of the parking lot, it seems like it'll be okay because of the retaining wall. And then the other question would be, was there any discussions with the applicant about the pending code update around the traffic signs with stop signs and handicap signs at the poles at all?
That, the applicant was made aware of that, kind of in the course speech after PNC. It's just kind of coming to notice, so we are making applicants aware of it.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions of staff, whether it's Mr. Serna or Ms. McNeese? Okay, thank you. So is the applicant wishing to make a presentation? If you could state your full name, please, and your address.
Brett Krasman, 554 Baywood Drive North. I'm the engineer record for the project. If you've got any questions for me, I'm here. You're talking about a retaining wall, that retaining wall. The base of the wall is 5.6, the top of the wall is 6.2. So this wall is one row of concrete blocks this high. So don't go thinking that there's some massive wall. It's one row of concrete blocks. It's three foot onto the property. It's essentially irrelevant. It could be removed. There's still plenty of property that it could be feathered out to. So don't think there's any retaining wall issues for that. Any other questions? I'm here.
Questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Everybody knows that we need parking down at the Sponge Docks, and I'm glad that you are working to provide that. The question that I have is drainage, where the rainwater is going to go? And what type of material you're going to use for base?
I cannot quite understand you. I'm sorry.
Okay. The question that I have is about drainage, where the rainwater is going to go?
Okay. We're doing a grass parking lot, so it's the same thing. It's there, grass to grass. We're doing a stable, a geo web stabilization underneath the grass so that it'll be, be able to hold a fire truck, essentially. So we're going to lay that down, then put the grass over top. But we're going to, we're going to have a concrete curb around it. So the water will actually be caught by that curb and be allowed to, and percolate in.
The curb is going to go all around the property or in certain places?
In the, in front of where the cars park and in the downhill side. We're not putting anything in the uphill side because water's coming that way.
Okay. What about the note side with the alleys, the retaining wall, which is there to, you know, to keep the dirt from coming down?
Well, again, that's not, that's not really a retaining wall. You're talking about one course of block. So it's not a wall. It's a course of block. So whoever labeled it as a wall has incorrectly labeled it. It's one course of wall, block. If it was taken out, there's still plenty of room at a three-to-one slope to more than adequately feather it down to the, to the alley. So if that, if that, and I'll quote, "wall" was removed, we meet more than any engineering codes to, at a three-to-one slope or four-to-one slope in that area.
The retaining wall was there, has been turned down over the years, has been, and don't you think it need to be repaired again and replaced?
In the portion of this property, it is one course of block.
It is in a place where it's turned down, but portion of it is not, correct?
That's not on this property.
It's not?
No.
Okay. I believe you. Because I've been there, I saw it.
Yeah.
I know the area very well.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at a 60-foot wide piece of property, and people are taking the wall all the way down the alley. We're only looking at a 60-foot wide piece that's, that the top, the topographic survey from the surveyor has one course of block that is- is seven tenths of a foot high, which is this high.
We just don't want to see the soil coming down to the alley. That's what I want to make sure.
No, I understand that.
Okay. If it does, you'll come back and fix it, right?
Excuse me?
If it does, if the soil comes down to the alley, you will come back and fix it?
If it comes down there, we'll, we'll get it cleaned up.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, hang on a second. Commissioner Carr?
I've got a couple. So, if you could just do me a favor and clarify, the property directly to the east, is there a wall between the property and the parking lot?
The property to the east?
The building. There's a building on the property.
No, there's no wall.
Okay. So, this is-
It comes downhill. There's a silt fence shown in the plan, but there's no wall.
Okay. So, if I was having cars parking in my backyard, I would be upset about that, and I would want some type of buffer between-
Well, they're coming in, and they're turning away from the house. You're, they're, they're turning away from the house. They're not turning headlights up into the house. They're turning away. But again, this is a, pretty much a daytime-use lot. This, we're not gonna have parking there at night. There's plenty of lots that are much closer if, you know, for nighttime use.
Okay. So, are the cars facing west when they pull in, or are they facing east when they pull in? They're facing west?
They turn west.
Okay. All right. I had this mixed up. So, thanks for clarifying.
No problem.
A couple of things with that is, the south side is a concern that I mentioned. Is there an issue with the applicant to do some type of foliage on the south side of the property?
Some type of-
Foliage, trees, plants?
We, we did all the requirements that were met for the, this district. We have, we have shrubs, and we have the tree that's required.
Okay. City staff also brought up the, the use of like a powder-coated pole for the stop sign and the handicap sign. Did you guys take any account of it?
I have not been made aware of that.
Okay. So, okay. Would you have any issues by using one of those? It's something that we're being, we're using throughout the town now, although the code's not updated yet, but we're in the process of getting there. Does the applicant have any issues with that?
I don't have an issue with it. If the owner doesn't have an issue with it, as long as staff's okay and they provide us the stuff we need.
Great. Thank you. There, there is a concern, I think, still with the lights that are going the southbound towards the house, but, and that's the house on the other side. That's the house on the other side of the road, not the alley. So, I really feel like there should be some type of foliage, although-
Although that's, it's not gonna be effective, because when you back out, you're gonna back out into the drive aisle, and that drive aisle, you can't put foliage across. So, whatever they're driving in, those lights are gonna go, and that's the case for any driveway, any parking lot. You know, we can't put trees across every driveway just to block lights.
So, in this situation, our code does state that, and I think we messed up on this from a staff standpoint, and I would challenge that in that aspect, because the lights are shining west, and then you also have cars pulling into the south, facing the south. You've got lights that are going all different directions. So, the rest of our code states you need to have at least-
Do not have lights going all different directions.
Okay. So, I appreciate the comment, but as a statement, you've got lights going south, you've got lights going west, and then you have lights coming back, going north. So, that's every direction but east in this statement. So, almost every direction but east. So, with that, I, I really think it, it should have some type of 30, at least 36 inches all array around this piece of property, like every other parking lot in our city does. I'm not sure. Maybe staff can elaborate a little bit further now that I understand the direction of the parking lot.
Can you help me with this and tell them it's not in that district? Okay, before we do that, we need to finish this witness. Any other questions of this witness, and then we can pull staff back up, if that's okay. So, we just keep it all in the right direction. Any other questions of the applicant's engineer? Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. McNeese, you had some, Commissioner Carr has some additional questions? Okay, so, Commissioner Carr, some additional questions, either of you or Ms. McNeese?
Yeah, in regard to the landscaping, the, the standards are a bit different in the transect code, because it's an infill-type code, and it does, it has been reviewed for that compliance with those standards, and it does meet the standards, which is a little different with the hedging and all that. So, we'll work with the applicant on that, but, you know, based on our review of the transect that it's in, it does meet the, the minimum standards.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that for me.
Any other questions of staff, then? Okay, now's the opportunity for anybody in the public that wishes to address this issue to step forward. Anyone wishing to address this application, there being none. Does the city have any closing statement they want to make, Ms. McNeese, Mr. Serna, specifically whether or not you want to add your staff report into evidence?
Yes, we would like to add it into evidence, but no other comments.
Thank you. Sir, now's your opportunity. Do you have any additional comments that you would like to make on behalf of the applicant?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, it's back to you.
Well, thank you. Are, are there any commission comments? Commissioner Carr, do you have any other comments?
I don't have any other comments. I think that the applicant did agree to add the poles, the powder-coated poles to the parking lot, so I think that was a nice addition by the applicant. So, thank you for that aspect.
We need to put that to the motion.
Yes. So, I'll make a motion to approve as a staff recommendation with the addition of the powder-coated poles for the stop sign and the handicap sign.
Second? Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penny?
Yes.
Al Huzza.
Yes, thank you. We are now going to miscellaneous, which is item number 13, the application 2024. This is an appeal for, of HPPB decision of demolition at 220 East Orange Street. Staff report.
Good evening. This item went to the Heritage Preservation Board on January 13th. The applicant is requesting appeal of the decision. The applicant's, the decision of the Heritage Preservation Board at that time was, they reviewed and denied the request for a certificate of approval. The applicant has provided a basis for the appeal, which is included in your packets. It includes letters from an engineer and contractor indicating that rehabilitation of the structure is not feasible. It also includes information regarding the code enforcement violation on the property. And according to Section 111 of the code, this board has the ability to affirm, modify, or reverse the decision of the Heritage, Heritage Preservation Board.
Thank you.
Can the applicant make his presentation too?
Sure. The applicant?
This is not quasi judicial, just so that you know. Sir, if you could just state your name and your address?
Yeah, my name is John Coolianis. My wife and I live on 1020 Peninsula Avenue. We own the property located at 220 Orange Street. Our attorney, Mike Driss, is here to speak as needed. An affidavit was submitted as such. My wife Kay and I purchased the land and structure behind our Ring Avenue office in mid-2004. The structure was uninhabitable at the time of the purchase and remained vacant since we do not have a use for it. I was approached in 2006 by Officer Ed Hayden of the Tarpon Springs Police Department about demolishing the structure.
Chief?
Then-chief, during your time. Officer Hayden was implementing the use of state grant money to demolish dilapidated buildings in our town. Several factors, mostly programmatic, as we understood it, caused our demolition to be pushed back considerably, and state funds dried up as the recession arrived in 2008. We've kept the structure boarded up ever since. I was cited by code enforcement this past summer for the condition of the structure. The code enforcement personnel referred me to Karen Lemmons and, and, and staff at city planning. With their guidance, I contracted a structural engineer, a general contractor, and pest control company to evaluate the structure. All the findings should have been provided to you by city staff. It is clear upon reading the professional reports that the building is beyond repair. Furthermore, on October 18th, 2019, the City of Tarpon Springs condemned the structure. The notice of unsafe structure issued by the City of Tarpon Springs Code Enforcement Department's corrective action states, quote, don't you hate it when people do that, quote, "structure must be demolished through the proper permitting process." On January 8th, 2020, I received the staff report from the city with the following recommendations. Staff recommends approval of the application for complete demolition and removal of the contributing structure. However, we received a revised report on January 10th with the same date, January 8th, dating the revised commission, the revised recommendation that was that, quote, "the staff recommends that the Heritage Preservation Board consider all evidence as presented in this packet in the hearing to inform their decision regarding the complete demolition and removing of the contributing structure." This directly contradicts the notice of unsafe structure from the city whereby the, the building development director and chief building officer writes, quote, "structure is uninhabitable and irreparable. Structure must be, must be demolished through the proper permitting process." We were instructed that we must go before the Heritage Preservation Board. The meeting was on January 13th, resulting in their denial of our request to demolish the structure. Our appeal before this board is based upon our assertion that the HPPB did not properly apply the law in this case. Article 7, paragraph 110b of the demolition section of the Heritage Preservation Code states that the board must consider the, all the following criteria. One, the historic architectural and cultural significance of the building or structure. The app, me, the applicant, is not disputing this condition. Two, the importance of the building or structure to the ambiance of a district or the pattern of land uses reflecting cultural traditions of the community and local ethnic group, yeah, groups. The structure has not been used in any form or fashion within the sponge industry of Tarpon Springs for more than 50 years. Furthermore, is not located in the sponge dock vicinity where the majority of sponging industry was located, and thus does not follow the pattern of land use of the downtown area. The building is structurally unstable and visibly unattractive, and does not contribute to the ambiance of a thriving, energetic downtown community envisioned by the city planners. Three, the difficulty or impossibility of replicating such a building or structure because of its design, texture, material detail, or unique location. The city's staff analysis states, quote, "the building itself is a fairly simple frame vernacular structure consisting of wood material, corrugated metal roof, and a concrete block foundation. The design and detail can be easily replicated at almost any location." That's staff saying that. Four, whether the building or structure is one of the last remaining examples of its kind in the district or in the city. There are six other structures previously used as sponge packing warehouses within a 1.25 mile radius of the center of town, using St. Nicholas as that center. Five, the future utilization of the site or a group occupancy of the structure. The property is in a T-4A transect district of the city's special area plan, SAP. City staff and economic development departments are encouraging multi-use retail and residential buildings in the area of downtown. This dilapidated and blighted structure only hinders such opportunities for this and the adjacent properties. Six, whether reasonable measures can be taken to save the building, structure, or traditional cultural property. The City of Tarpon Springs staff report dated January 8th, 2020, response to this point stated, quote, "The applicant has submitted an engineer's report and the statement from a building contractor that outlined the basic issues with this building. Both the engineer and the contractor have rendered professional opinions advising the demolition of the structure in lieu of any attempt to rehabilitate it. The structure was condemned, was condemned by the city's chief building official, Kevin Powell, in October 2019. Based on the submittal of these three written expert opinions, it has concluded that the building is beyond repair, and there are no reasonable measures that can be taken to save it," end quote. Again, that's city staff. Seven, whether the building, structure, or traditional cultural property is capable of earning a reasonable economic return on its value, and whether the perpetuation of the building or structure, considering its physical condition, its location, and anticipated expense of rehabilitation would be economically feasible. The city's staff report dated January 8th, 2020, states, quote, "rehabilitation is not feasible, is not a feasible option due to the instability of the building," end quote. Quote again, "this compilation of evidence supports the conclusion that the rehabilitation of the building is not economically or even, or even physically feasible." Again, that's coming from staff, and it's coming from the city staff report. We contend that, we contend that the Heritage Preservation Board did not properly apply the elements of Article 7, paragraph 110b of the Heritage Preservation Guidelines. In addition to the above evidence of the structural safety hazard, this structure has become an attractive nuisance to the surrounding community due to the increased number of homeless people in the, in the downtown area despite our constant boarding up of all points of entry and posting of no trespassing signs. Vagrants have repeatedly broken into the structure as a temporary accommodation shelter. Drugs and alcohol have been consumed on the property as well. My wife and I pick up empty beer and alcohol containers on the property on a regular basis. Additionally, we have reported to the police findings of needles and other drug paraphernalia on several occasions, and officers have come out and actually helped us pick up these needles. We have also chased off vagrants we found urinating and defecating around the property. The fire department was deployed as vagrants set a bonfire at the, at night that caught trees on fire on the property. Beyond the structural dilapidation of this building, the overall safety of the area will be enhanced by the removal of this structure. I'm sure, I'm sure Chief Cochen could more intelligently speak on this problem. We have been put in an untenable situation by the city. The city has condemned the building that also deems the structure uninsurable. And furthermore, as a citizen, I question whether the city now enjoined, is enjoined by liability if anyone were to be injured on the structural, injured by the structural instability of this property, since they have demanded its demolition by one department and are preventing us from following its directive by another city entity. In conclusion, please allow me to follow the city's staff, City of Tarpon Springs Code Enforcement Department's directive to demolish the location, the building on location 220 East Orange. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions to me?
No questions.
Okay. If you have any questions, my attorney, he's available here.
Your attorney, Mr. Driss, wants to speak as well?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Commission comments?
It's a public hearing, too.
Hmm?
It's a public hearing.
Commission comments, and then we'll go into the public comments after that. Any commission comments?
I'd just say, Mayor, that it's, I've always found it difficult to talk out of both sides of my mouth, and I think in this circumstance, being that we're saying it's condemned and unsafe and needs to be knocked down, I think we should grant the man approval to knock it down.
Okay.
I understand that it's historically significant, you know, but at a certain point, once the building's gone too long, it's gone too long.
Yeah. Any other commission comments, commission comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just to echo a couple of the points in our backup for the public, it's saying that the building is beyond repair, and there are no reasonable measures that can be taken to save it, and that the structure must be demolished through the proper permitting process because it's uninhabitable and irreparable. I would assume, and this is, I guess, a question for staff, just that that also means that the building cannot be moved. I'm assuming if, if all of these official engineer reports and contractor reports say that the building needs to be torn down because the structure is so bad, then that also means that the structure cannot be moved, because I know that had been mentioned, I think, from the, from the past board meeting. And then also to echo, I think, as a responsibility that our board has, because we hate to see a piece of history go, because once that happens, you know, it's gone forever. So, how can we make sure that this doesn't happen again? And that's really where I want to take it from here, is that we're here now. This sucks. I hate seeing this go, but how can we make sure that this doesn't happen again? I don't know whether we need to meet with some of the other sponge warehouse owners, you know, biannually or something like that, and just- you know, biannually or something like that, and just make sure that there's, there's nothing that they need to maintain the property. And I understand that this building was in bad condition when it was bought in 2004, so I'm not putting any of the blame on the current property owner for this. I'm just saying, I want to make sure that we don't lose another one of these in the future. So, again, I think it'd be prudent if we got with staff, maybe develop some type of relationship with our other sponge warehouse owners just to see, hey, what do you need to make sure that this doesn't happen again?
Thank you. Commission call?
Was your answer about, did you have a question about moving it?
Yeah.
Is there, Mark, do you know if there's any answers on if that's possible or not?
I don't see a way with reading the building officials' report. I get, I know they say code enforcement, but really, the building official's the one who declared it. So, I don't see a way.
Yeah, and please, Mr. Kuliannis, thank you for bringing this forward. This is, has nothing to do against you and your wife. I'm just frustrated as a city, I think we let our residents down in this situation. This is a piece of history for our Greek heritage, our sponging industry that has been part of our community for many, many years. We, as a city, I think, let the citizens down, and I'm sorry about that. Overall, because code enforcement should have stepped in in this situation probably 15, 20 years ago, in this building, before it got to the point where it is unreparable. So that's one of the concerns that I have in this situation is, we need to be more proactive on the code enforcement side on these types of buildings, from a proactive approach when we're seeing these buildings, because if we're losing more and more historic buildings in our historic districts, at some point, our historic district doesn't become a historic district anymore because of neglect of the buildings, and then at that point, you get to tear them down because it's too expensive to replace them, or, I'm sorry, it's too expensive to fix them. So growing up in the historic district, I'm very passionate about our historic district and seeing it preserved, and keeping that charm that we have and the character that's in the district that's there today. So, there's a few things, though, in the backup that I feel that, and this is a formality in my opinion, that I have a hard time supporting it tonight. It sounds like there's potential support in the board tonight to move forward with this, but it talks about the engineer's report, how it's not financially, I forget exactly how it's phrased. Something to do with financial, it doesn't make sense to move anything forward financially, it's too expensive to fix, but there's really no numbers provided for me to make that decision to say, yes, that's true. It is a historic structure, and then number five, I think, was another, and then that number five is, there's not really a plan for the site other than using a zoning district. Again, there's nothing against you, Mr. Kuliannis, and I appreciate you coming forward and sharing some of this, but it would be nice to see what the plans of this piece of property would be used for. Is it okay if I ask him to come up and answer that, Mayor?
Sure, you can.
On one note, just the, first of all, just, just to go over what I mentioned in my presentation, that when I purchased the property, that I was approached by the city to demolish it, that's the condition it was in when I bought it. So, and I know you weren't impugning that I didn't take care of the building, but that's the condition it was in. I've been in that building one time, my foot went through the floor, it's, it is unstable. Everything I touched, you can do this and put your fingers through the wood, okay? Even the outsides, when I'm trying to board it up, as a matter of fact, one of your, remember when I called you about your officer that did a, I know I'm not supposed to talk to staff directly, but, but Officer Cochin, one of his officers, and just to make a note, I served on the police pension board for 15 years, I served Chief Lacouris, and I've served Chief Cochin, and I was proud of that. So, just, just want to make that a point. So, yeah, when your police officer came to help me, when we had some vagrants break in and I called the police, he, we actually tried boarding it up, we couldn't get nails to stay in it because the wood was so rotten, it, the nails would just pop right out. So, you know, I've been, I've been called by several people, I think even, I think you, even you, Commissioner, had called my office and asked my wife, like, what are we going to do with the property? And I appreciate that, it was kind of like an open-ended question, but awkward, I would say, at the time. But, you know, you know what my real, what my desire was, is, is one of the reasons I didn't tear it down earlier was that, I'm a CPA by trade, okay, so I'm thinking numbers all the time. And I was thinking, I'd rather tear it down when I was going to develop the property and then incorporate those costs into the development. You know, I'd like to build, and I've, and I spoke to Karen about it, is, I'd like to relocate my office, I'd like to build a new office, my, you know, my office is up on Orange and Ring, and as a matter of fact, just, again, just to make this clear about, I'm a citizen that cares about this town. My father was born here in 1915, my grandfather came here in 1898, so I go back, just like the Terrapini, so we go way back. As a matter of fact, your, your grandfather, Abe, and my wife's grandfather, Whitey, were best buddies. Okay? So, I care about the town, and I love it, and I want to see it be good. And, and when I bought the property, I, I bought the old health department building in, as well, and you see where I converted that to my office, and I think I was even given some con, accolades from city staff that I, that we did a pretty nice job of fixing up. That was an old dilapidated building as well. But I couldn't do anything with this, with that old warehouse in the back, it was just too bad. So, you know, I, I, just like Mr. Kokolakis, when he, when he prepared all that property, you know, he didn't develop it because we were all waiting for comps to come up in town, right, so that we could, you know, spend money and develop the property and, and get good rents, or, and, and be able to get good financing. So, I think we're there, I think we're there. And I was talking to Karen about putting retail on Safford Avenue, putting my, actually moving my office from where the, where it is now into an office on, on, on the side of Orange, and actually putting a residence above it, and my wife and I want to live there. So we want to be part of that, of that urban change of Tarpon. So, but that's not, again, remember, I didn't come here because I wanted to tear the building down. I came here because somebody, code enforcement came after me, and then I got a condemnation which said, I must demolish the building. Okay, so you could, you could see the, the awkward kind of catch-22 situation I'm in is, I got one, I got one part of, of the city saying, you must tear it down, I got this other part of the city saying, you can't tear it down. Oh, and by the way, if you don't tear it down, we're going to fine you, but you can't tear it down. You know, I'm just waiting for you guys to tell me what to do, so.
So your future plan, thank you for that information.
Yeah.
Your future plan's more of like a mixed use for the property of offices?
I think that would be ideal. I think that would be ideal there. And I have enough, I have enough space because I own the property, I own from corner to corner, so I own from Safford all the way to Ring, and then I also own all the way up to my next door neighbor, he's right on the property line, so I have all that space as well. So there's lots of opportunities to do something there, and I, and I'd love to do that.
What's your call? The answer you're looking for?
Yeah, and more, it was great, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Kuliannis.
And if you could just, I've got one other question for you.
Yeah.
To reiterate the staff backup, it talks about the beams of the supportive structure, how they're fully rotted.
Yeah.
That run on the outside of the building, but the one in the middle is partially rotted, I suppose, so can you touch a little bit more about the dry rot and what that looks like from there?
It's, it, you know, you have, you have pictures in your, I think you have all have pictures.
Yeah, we have pictures.
Yeah, and it's, you know, you, you have a beam there, and then you'll have, like, looks like, like, like a sponge, right, like with holes all up and in it, and, and I don't, I don't, I don't know how it's going to stay up. You know, and, and again, like I said, my, my, my grandfather was Captain George, he had sponge boats. You obviously know my father, okay? And, you know, I care about the sponge industry as much as any of y'all do, and I'd love to keep that building. I had no intentions of, it's just, I just can't economize, and you have, when we talked about the economics, I have a report in there from a contractor who's, you know, I brought, brought her over, and she said she, there's nothing we can do. I asked her, can, what could you do to salvage this building and, and put it in some form that could be used? And she said, I can't. She said, if I did that, it would be a building that looked like that building, but it wouldn't be that building, because everything would, almost everything would have to be changed. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, I have to be honest with you, it's very sad that we see a historic building like this to get in such a bad shape, to be beyond repaired. Look in the backup information, in January 13, 2020, the HPB denied the request to turn this, turn this building down, even though that is falling down. But I want to thank the board, I want to thank the Historical Preservation Board for doing such a good job and preserving, do their best to preserving all the buildings, the historical buildings that we have in town. This property is also, has an active code enforcement case. It received a notice from the building department that it's unsafe structure. The opinion from the construction engineering that this building is unfeasible due to the economic and safety concerns, and the contractor says that this building is not feasible due to the instability of the, the building. I'd like to know, actually, I'd like to know what options do we have? Is there any possibility in the world that can be saved? Is there any way that can actually place some braces that it can be relocated to a different place, or that can be restored to a place where we can save our, our heritage? Look in that information that it was provided to us, it doesn't look like that we did. And Commissioner Donovan, he had a, a very valid question, what are we going to do to prevent that in the future? We discussed that with Mr. Lacouris before, and we need to identify all the sponge warehouses, evaluate their condition, and work with the owners to make sure we repair those buildings so we don't have to face that again. These sponge warehouses is so important to our heritage, we must prevent anything like that to happen again. It's, we, it's very important that we maintain them and maintain them in a, in order that we all can be proud of. The question still I have is, is this building is unbuildable, is unrepaired, is unsafe? I think we, we missed, you know, we missed a good opportunity through all these years for not taking, you know, the leadership that we should have from years back to preserve this building. So, I'll be honest with you, I am very, very embarrassed for that. We are now going to the public comments.
Anita Protus, 901 Bay Shore Drive. When this first came up, I spoke to try to preserve it, move it. How many of you went down there to see this sponge packing house? I went down there, it, I'm surprised it hasn't fallen. I grew up on Orange, corner of Orange and Gross, I remember the building. I touched the building, that big hole is where my thumb and finger went through the wood. The roof is gone, and Mr. Kuliannis is not to blame, we are to blame. Our historic preservation before we even had the board here at Tarpon, but the organization's to blame. We've learned a lesson. He has a right to tear it down, it cannot be saved, it's deplorable. The only saving grace we have now is to take photographs of it, and I've got a lady going to take pictures. I remember, we used to go down there with the Sagunas children and look in there and run around, but not anymore. To go in there, you're going to fall through. I'm thankful that he bought it, when he did, and at that time, I tried to get help in a, a grant for our house on Orange Street, because that was the first hospital in Tarpon Springs, where my husband grew up. And we couldn't get a grant to preserve the house, and then we tried with Mr. Hayden to try to get it for the sponge packing, and we couldn't get it. But now, we've learned a lesson, we must be very active in this community with our Historic Preservation Board, working in Tallahassee. We have excellent people who know what they're doing here in Tarpon Springs, that aren't on the, that's not on the Historic Preservation Board, but they've worked in Tallahassee. We need to work as a city to start going after grants to preserve these and help the owners of these packing houses, and let's save them. As you know, I'm up here all the time, I've got the plan that you're going to talk about to preserve the bayou with what I think we should do with it. And we need to preserve what we've got left. This is a lesson, a hard lesson to swallow, but he has every right, and it is a necessity that the building come down. If you start to move it, even with braces, you have to see how rotten it is, termite-ridden it is. I wouldn't even go through the door if they offered to take me in there anymore, it's gone. And we have a chance now to do something with what we've got left. And another thing, he has a right to do what he wants with his property. I, I sit here and listen, it's like a Gestapo, what are you going to do with it? That's his property, he has a right to do whatever he wants within the zoning there with his property. We cannot mandate what he does. Put there. And I hear this, what kind of plants, what kind of trees we want, that's not what we're here for, we're here to help, not stand like a guard over a property and what people want to do. I don't care for that, that's like blackmailing up here, that's wrong. But, it's, you know, for me to say the building's gone, and how I like to preserve historic preservation, his building is gone, and let me tell you, there's some real old termites in there with beards.
Thank you, Anita, you're getting soft lately.
How about you, and that's for the first, please, what do you?
I know it.
My name is Laura Milford, and I reside at 617 Fair Oaks Drive. I serve on the Heritage Preservation Board as the current chair. And I understood when we reviewed this case, the condition of the building and his experts, what we had really wanted to see was a 30-day or a 60-day time period to take one more expert look at it to say, we've done the right things. Because, as you all know, the Secretary of Interior Standards require that we preserve these properties, and none of us are experts on that property, so we wanted an expert opinion from others than their experts. I'm not saying their experts are wrong, I'm saying we wanted that one last thing so that when the Secretary of Standards, the Secretary of Interior reviews this, they're going to say, the Heritage Preservation Board took that one last step to ensure that that property did in fact need to come down. Our report that we were received from the city said that this is one of four remaining properties. So tonight, when this board overturns the Heritage Preservation's decision, which, if it had done the 30 days, we had already had the proof now, tonight, and it could have already been done. But they chose to have us vote on it, we voted on it, and we denied it, and we understand that you have the right to overturn that, that's not the question. But I do wish that this board would annually send out mailers to all, whether it's commercial or residential properties in the historic district, that states, this is the guidelines, this is what's expected of you when you own a property in a historic district, and give them a link to the website, give them whatever data you need annually, so that anybody moving in and out of the area that's in a historic district is going to know who they have to go to, what the process is, because this is not first property that has been demolition by neglect. There was at least one other case that you reviewed, and you actually, in a way, supported what we said, because the one thing we wanted was that one more expert, and they didn't want to do it. When they came here, you ruled that they needed that 30-day and to show us one more piece of information. And so after that, then you did demolish that one, and we would have done the same thing had we had that one more piece. So that's all I have to say about that. I hope that you will support the board and move forward to make some changes so we stop seeing our properties destroyed. seeing our properties destroyed. Thank you.
I want you to know that we want to thank you and thank every member of the Heritage Preservation Board. We really appreciate your service.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Coast to Vatico, this is 538 West Cedar Street. I've been in the packing house a long time ago. I think maybe about 10 or 15 years ago, I was actually looking for a Model T Ford that I was sure was there or was not. It was in bad shape there. But I really, I understand what everybody's saying, but I think Mr. Coolianus is between a rock and a hard place. If you ask him, would he prefer to have the warehouse moved? He'd tell you yes, because it would save him $30,000 or $20,000 for the demolition. I think the actual estimate's $22,000. This action has been going on for a very long time. And I want to just, my personal knowledge of this, not one person, other than a private resident, has approached Mr. Coolianus about moving the warehouse. Not one person from the city has approached him about maybe working something out. And I think one of the reasons we get ourselves into these situations is, for example, one side of the city staff doesn't talk to the other. The code enforcement officer issued a citation on this, started the wheels moving, got Mr. Coolianus before the code enforcement board, then he had to go to get some advice from staff about going to Historic Preservation Board. I guess the point is, before we put a resident in a situation like this where there is no option, I think we need to stop and think that we're going to cite Historic Preservation property for condemnation. And we need to rethink that real hard before we do that, and maybe get city staff and others to help that individual understand where you're heading on this, where this journey is going to take you if you don't do anything. And I think that's part of the problem. And I do know that the Historic Preservation Guidelines are going to be discussed at a workshop in the future. I know, I think somebody brought that up, perhaps from the Historic Preservation Board, about putting something in the Historic Preservation Board guidelines to require people to keep up their properties. I understand that. It's a complicated matter, and I'm kind of looking forward to getting to that point. But I think we can talk about a lot of things of what we should have done with Mr. Coolianus, but I think all of that's too late at this point. I think we put him in this situation. Six months ago, he was very, very happy, just minding his own business, doing his work. But we had the code enforcement, next step was condemning the building, next step was going before the Historic Preservation Board. And if it wasn't for the city staff, or at least those responsible for intervening, he'd have a fine running today. Fortunately, that was stayed until this whole matter got resolved. So I want to thank the commission for that, and also want to thank the Historic Preservation Board. They do their job. That's not even a question. But we put them in these situations. And I think that's where we need to kind of rethink this whole process of what we do with our historic properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other comments?
I wasn't planning on speaking because when I looked at the backup, the evidence was pretty overwhelming. And we've heard a whole bunch of good comments about things about moving forward. Moving? Where are you going to move it to? You're going to tell Mr. Coolianus you have to provide another property, move a dilapidated building to? Are you wanting to provide property and take that assumption on you? That's one question you have to think about. Secondly, it was mentioned about sending out notices to people in the historic district. Well, we don't need to, well, you can look at the definition of the historic district, but if you check back in the records, and I'm not sure if Patty or Karen can help, but years ago, we got a grant to do a survey, and we have a list of properties already that are historic, semihistoric, all historic versus contributing structures. That's there. So if you have concerns, you've got a list of where you can start focusing on. Thirdly, I want to get back to another point that I had talked about once before, and it involves code. As I mentioned last time I spoke about code, it's mostly buildings, land, and property. Code needs to be placed into the Building Development Services with a civilian inspector. And with what you're paying the current code inspector, you could have two staff inspectors as civilians. Think about that. Now, the Historic Preservation Board is in legislative guidelines they have to go by. But maybe it's time to have a workshop with the Historic Preservation Board and concerned citizens about how we move forward approaching our historic properties, what we can do to help those landowners to assist them, not so much as bailing them out all the time, but ways to assist them, finding them federal grants to get their properties rehabilitated as compared to just getting us a grant that we go and do a study. There's all kinds of things. But you guys, if y'all really serious about historic preservation, you need to put a workshop together and invite those various groups. And also have somebody from Building Development there to speak about some of the issues that would come up with regards to the differentiations of property. So again, I'm going to finish there, but I think you have enough to think about now.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item?
There is.
Ma'am, you already spoke. Thank you.
The committee's been on board for the head of the workshop.
Thank you. It's back to the commission. Do we have any other commission comments or questions? If not, we'll adjourn the motion.
Move to grant approval for the demolition of the Structure 220 East Orange Street based on the testimony presented tonight and the findings of FAC and the backup.
And to reverse the decision of the Heritage Preservation Board.
Correct. Need a second?
Second.
A roll call, please.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Yes.
Mayor Huizos?
Yes, thank you. We're now going to addendum item number one. Addendum item number one is reject donation of rock. And that item was actually placed on the agenda by me. Since then, we received, actually yesterday afternoon, we received an email from the contractor, from the contractor with the suggestion of Commissioner Seber that the donation has been withdrawn. So therefore, I don't think we need any discussion. Any commission comments? Commissioner Donovan? Anybody? No. Any public comments on this item? Need a motion?
There's no motion needed.
No motion needed?
No.
Okay. Any other consensus?
You don't need it either. The donation has been withdrawn, so there's nothing to act upon.
Okay.
Just like the fireworks.
Well, that concludes the regular session agenda, and we go to the staff comments. Police chief?
No comments, Mayor, thank you.
City attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
City manager?
No, sir.
City clerk?
No comment.
Want to tell us about the election?
I could tell you. Next Tuesday is the election. The polls will be open from 7:00 to 7:00. It's too late to ask for a mail ballot. However, early voting locations are open at three supervisor of election sites. And being that it's a presidential preference primary, if you do have a mail ballot that you haven't returned, you can also return it. Our library is a drop-off location, and the times that you can drop off are Monday through Friday, 10:00 to 5:00, and Saturday, 10:00 to 4:00. And that would be through the 16th.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr? Yeah, comments?
No, I don't. Are you doing comments again after the CRA meeting?
Are we just going to do that unless you have something else?
Okay. No, I don't have any comments right now.
Vice mayor? Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I did just want to mention that there is a workshop. It's an update of National Register Local Historic District Design Review Guidelines in the manual. And it's hosted by the City of Tarpon Springs Heritage Preservation Board, Monday, April 6, 2020, at 6:30 PM. And it's right here in this room. Just a heads up to the public.
Thank you. I have several announcements to make. Saturday and Sunday, March 14 and 15, we have the Fine Arts Festival at the Craig Park. That starts on Saturday, 9:00 AM, and on Sunday at 10:00 AM. Saturday, March 11, we have movies in the park, actually at Splush Park, that's been, that will be given by the Recreation Department. Sunday, March 22, we have the Greek Independence Parade that will start at the, actually, on Pinellas Avenue, right by the Greek church, and it goes all the way down to the Deaconess Boulevard. Last week, I traveled up to Tallahassee. I met with Senator Hooper and Representative Sproles to discuss the finding for the Anclaw River Extend Turnbasing Draging. That's the House Bill 3121. We also discussed projects relating to the sea level rise. That's the House Bill 3119. I'd like to report to you that the House Bill 3121, it's on the right track, but the whole amount of $812,000 that we need was not appropriated. But Commissioner, excuse me, Representative Sproles is working to increase the number that we need. The other House bill, which is the 3119, was not voted. But we will be working with representatives, all representatives of Tallahassee, Senator Hooper, and Representative Sproles, and also Representative LaDvala, who has been a lot of help to us, to make sure that we get funding during the next cycle. Also, I'd like to tell the board that I paid for all these expenses out of my pocket when I went up to Tallahassee. So with that, that concludes the regular session meeting, and it's adjourned at 8:08 We're now going to take a few minutes break, and we'll come back to start the CRA meeting. We're now going to take a few minutes break, and we'll come back to do, to start the CRA meeting. I now call to order the Community Redevelopment Agency Meeting of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, March 20, 2018, at 8:19 PM. Roll call, please.
Chair Levises.
Here.
Vice Chair Tarepani.
Here.
Commissioner Severs, absent an excuse, Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Here.
The item number one on the agenda is to approve the minutes of January 28, 2020. This is for the CRA. Commissioned comments. Are there any public comments on the item number one? Here none? I need a motion.
Move to approval. Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan.
Yes.
Commissioner Carr.
Yes.
Vice Chair Tarepani.
Yes.
Chair Levises.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Item number two is a CRA annual report.
Thank you, Karen Lemmons, Economic Development Manager. I'm pleased to be here tonight to present the annual report. State statutes require CRAs to provide annually in March reporting of activities from that fiscal year along with the financial statement. So this is the report from FY '19, which covers October of 2018 to September of 2019. Just for a little background, I think you're all familiar with our CRA, but it was created in 2001. It sunsets in 2030. Right now, the county is looking at its rules and procedures regarding CRAs, but right now, we could request a 20-year extension if we would want to. The goal is obviously to stimulate revitalization in the, within the CRA by reinvesting the property tax increment dollars into the CRA and creating an attraction for private investment. And then, over the life of the CRA to date, the taxable municipal values have increased an average of about 5% per year. We've had a lot of activity within the CRA. We've had several business openings. We've had a few closings, and we've had some relocations and expansions. As nice it is to attract new businesses, the relocations and the expansions are really important. It shows that we have a robust business community and climate when a business can expand and when it chooses to relocate and stay within the city. And we've got several new business openings. Most of them are restaurants. There's a new wine bar, a new brewery, which will make five now within the CRA. Some of these are already open. Others will be opening very shortly. Incentives grants. These have really been the backbone of our CRA and have been what really caused revitalization for our CRA. The facade improvement grant started in 2011. That's a 50% reimbursement up to $10,000 or $15,000, depending on the number of stories of the building. We have approved to date 71 grants. And then in 2015, we began a restaurant recruitment grant. And that's when we were trying to revitalize the downtown and trying to attract new restaurants and nighttime foot traffic and trying to look at some of those retail buildings and repurpose them into restaurants. So since that time, we have given out 16 of those grants. And here's a before and after of Edward Jones. Here's the listing of the restaurants that have received the restaurant recruitment grants. We have a couple more pending. Here's an example of, this is the Fuel Bar on Lime, a before and after. And then the economic impact. This is what we use to come back every year and request more dollars. We've had 87 projects over the years, $560,000 in grant expenditures from the CRA. And that has resulted in almost $3.5 million in private investment into our buildings, which is a 700%, return on investment, which is a pretty good rate of return for our tax dollars. And then some public infrastructure projects within the CRA. The public library renovations are ongoing. This is the Ring Avenue construction and parking lot that was completed at the end of 2018. Provides some additional parking spaces downtown. The cultural center, as you know, is under restoration. And then we've been discussing a lot of beautification and signage within the CRA. We've got the historic street signs. And that, there was some talk earlier with HPB that really came up from the Historic Preservation Board when they were talking about, do people know they live in a historic district and how can we notify them? And this was one of the ways we came up with, is having these street signs. So people would know, this is a different area and you live in a historic district. The wayfinding signs, which were approved earlier, and we're getting ready for the bid specifications for those. The historic building plaques and the historic markers, those are out. We're looking for resident feedback on the text. And once we finalize that, we'll be putting those plaques on the downtown buildings and going to the state for the historic markers. And then we've got a lot of new lighting downtown. This is Hibiscus Avenue where there's new lights on mirrors. I know there's additional projects underway for lighting in the downtown area. And residentially, these are the Orange Street residences, two single-family homes that went up across from Tarpon Tavern. One of them has been sold. It was mentioned earlier about property values in this area. How we're trying to increase those property values to incentivize additional redevelopment. So the fact that this residence sold for the price that it did is good for our local developers. The Pine Street Apartments, these are just north on Stafford Avenue, two buildings, again, on the Pinellas Trail. As you see, we're filling in along the trail with that linkage from the Sponge Docks to downtown. And then our commercial projects. This is the Lemon Street Trade Center. This has had some challenges. It's still not completed, but once it does get complete eventually, it will provide some new jobs in the area and walking distance to our downtown. Stafford Avenue and Center Street, this is 201 East Center, again, along the Pinellas Trail. This is a former warehouse building that was recently completely renovated to a new, modern and industrial-looking building. They've attracted a great tenant, who's a world-renowned artist from St. Petersburg, who moved here. We're working with them. We're working with the owner. He has a vision for what types of tenants he would like to see in that building. And we're working to get a good synergy of tenants that will really add to the diversity of downtown and provide a place that people want to come and congregate. And then our festivals and events continue happening in the downtown area. Obviously, the First Friday is our most popular, most successful snow place. And the arts and crafts festivals. And they've been trying over the years to have some of the festivals move off of Tarpon Avenue to relieve traffic. They are moving them onto Court Street or Orange Street. And then future and ongoing projects. We're working on a business survey of business owners and property owners that will be online. And also, I have a high school intern that's working with me. He's been staying, he's been with me since the high school internship program in the summer. And we're working on a survey of high school students to see what they, what their thoughts are of the city, what kind of businesses they do. Will they, if they're going away to college, will they come back? So I think it would be really great to get a youth perspective of what they think about the city of Tarpon Springs. And then West Tarpon Avenue, obviously, these are the properties at the west end, the one that's owned by the CRA and the two private parcels, and you'll hear about those later. The downtown vacant lot, I think we're going to be talking a little bit later about a process. We do have two redevelopment proposals, so that's another good sign. Downtown parking, we've been looking at parking needs, addressing a future parking garage. I have reached out to both SunTrust Bank and Wells Fargo. They were both very appreciative of being contacted. They said the only issues they really have are on First Fridays. And they really only asked for us to help clean up the parking lots. They plan on keeping those lots open. They said they don't tow cars. They both are invested in the city and in downtown, and they're looking forward to our future needs for parking and a future parking garage. But they were very receptive to us reaching out for them. And then the Manatee Plaza, I think this was brought up earlier as well. We've been working for years with the property owner who went into receivership with the bank. This property will be going on the market in the next few months. You know, our plan and vision for this has been a city-center concept with a mixed use of retail and residential. There's been, some of the proposed buyers that we have talked to have talked about increasing the density to allow for more residential on the property. So hopefully, we'll be seeing something come forward in the next year or so. And then the new incentive grant we're proposing tonight is the Building Code Assistance Program, and we'll be talking about that later as well. So obviously, we have a lot ongoing. We have a lot more to do, but we've really come a long way in the last several years. You know, we've attracted 10 new restaurants. We've got five breweries now, a sixth on the docks. We have a new craft distillery that, again, referring back to the HPB, was an old sponge warehouse. So that was our first repurpose of a sponge warehouse into a really good business. So we're moving forward. The CRA merchants are excellent to work with. They support each other. They do a lot of cross-marketing, co-op programs together. So we're looking forward to continuing our progress. And thank you all for your support and your guidance as we move forward. So with that, if you have any questions. Oh, one thing. I wanted to just give a thank you to Kiriakos Spaklous, who is my student intern from Tarpon High. He took a lot of the pictures here, so I just wanted to give him a kudos for that.
Thank you. Kiriakos is a good guy. Very good guy. Ms. Levis, thank you for the report. Congratulations on your accomplishments. You know, this is really a good information that you're providing with us tonight. I'm just surprised that I haven't seen any members from our business community to be here tonight to look at all this information. That will be so useful to them. This annual report covers, as you said, it covers activities and financial statements from October 1, 2018, to September 30, 2019. That was five months ago. Where that report, is that going to the state as well?
It goes to the county.
Goes to the county. When did you have to submit that?
By the end of March.
Oh, okay. So you have five months to do that?
March 31st.
Okay, thank you. I'm very glad that we're able to provide 71 CRAs facade improvement grants and 16 grants for restaurant improvements. Is any possibility that, can we get the names and the amount of money that we're actually, you know, gave, they got?
Yes.
If you would, please.
Mm-hmm.
That way, we have that information, because a lot of times, people are asking about it. So we can actually show how much money that it were and what kind of a financial help we're able to provide. We were able to provide parking in two areas, the Ring Avenue and Court Street. But we still need to have a parking garage. This is something that we must start looking more, effectively, more actively. I know Mr. Licures and I, we went to a couple places and went and saw the property. I hope, Mr. Licures, that you, we have a better luck with that. Vice Mayor Tarepani.
Thank you, Mayor.
Comment?
Thanks, Karen, for your presentation. I always look forward to the CRA year-end review. Couple things that I think are worth just mentioning again. You said that, over the course of however long we've offered the grants, going on 10 years, close, we've given away $560,000 in grant money, which has resulted in $3.4 million in private investment and can be looked at as a 700% return on investment. So I think that that's outstanding. I can remember a time where you literally were going door-to-door to try and give the money away. Like, literally, we couldn't even get people to take advantage of the grants. And now, you know, to see some numbers like that, I think, is really a positive thing. And really speaks truth to the idea of a public initiative is followed by private investment. So I think it's important for us to be thinking like that always. Not just in dollars and cents, but also whether it's an infrastructure project or a beautification project. Our initiative is generally followed by private investment. I think that's being shown pretty evidently throughout town in today's time. So thank you for that. I look forward to seeing what the new grant has to offer and how that is utilized in terms of updating some building codes. I think that there's probably plenty of businesses, newer businesses, on the horizon, just in my day-to-day experience, that are trying to come into town. And I think that being able to, first of all, have the knowledge of the CRA grants and then the ability to offer them and hook people up with yourself goes a long way to trying to recruit these people. And I would say, more times than not, if someone is willing to jump through the hoops to utilize the grant funds, it kind of separates them in terms of their seriousness in business. And more times than not, when we see somebody take advantage of these grants, it appears to me that they stay in business. So thanks for what you do, and we look forward to another good year.
Commissioner Carr.
Thanks, Mayor. I believe we live in a great town here in Tampa Bay that we call home, in Tarpon Springs. And Karen, I really appreciate all the work that you do from the economic standpoint over the city and the report. Our downtown is thriving, I believe. We've got people all over the place, up and down Pinellas Avenue, throughout the Sponge Docks, and all over Tarpon. So seeing the growth that you provided here is a great to see. I think we have a lot of great assets in our town. So thanks again for putting the report together, and I love calling Tarpon Springs home.
Commissioner Donovan.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Karen, for putting together this report. I really appreciate all the work that you do for our CRA and economic development as a whole. I did have a couple questions. Of the $3.4 million in private investment, where is that? Like, is there like a building or two that, like, included the bulk of that investment? Just as far as we got the $3.4 million number?
Yeah, that's based on, part of the application, they give the construction value. So that's it. So that's probably a low number. Some of the ones I'm thinking about were ours. Creole Smokehouse was a real big one. Tuscan Sun was a real big one. A lot of them are small, you know, smaller projects. But there's a couple that were, you know, complete renovations.
And then as far as the grants go, since we've been doing the grants, I saw that it said, you know, we approved 71 facade grants and 16 restaurant recruitment grants. And I don't expect to have this number on you, but I would be interested to see how many recipients of the grants have closed? Just to kind of see, like, the full proof or the effectiveness of them. So again, do you have that number, or I assume?
Well, I can give you the entire list of all the grants, but I'll tell you, there's only been a handful, and from that, they've immediately been, attracted a new business because of the grants. For example, Sweet Al's Bakery. For example, Sweet Al's Bakery Cafe Poli is there now. Because of the grant, it was turnkey. KCQ Barbecue went out, ours went in. So for the, for the stores that had grants, made it much easier to attract a new business because the building was up to date and it looked nice. But I can, I can give you the numbers.
Okay. And do we do any follow-up with our grants? So like, say, a year after you got the grant and business is up and running, or the grant has been initiated? Or for the ones that, the businesses that failed and had to leave and receive the grant, is there any follow-up that we do that, where you say, hey, how did the grant impact your ability to do business within the city?
I do follow-ups after the grant, shortly after we give the grant. And in terms of, you know, any businesses that leave, that's part of the retention program. So, you know, we talk with them about what, you know, is there anything the city could have done, or why did you leave? So we get an idea if there's something that we could do, or if they left for, you know, other reasons.
Okay. And then as far as the youth survey go, how is that being distributed? I'd like to know a little bit more about that. Like, what are we asking? Is it just high school students, or?
Yeah, we're working on that now. That's, I'm kind of assigning that to him as a project. So we're going to be doing it, because he knows better than I do with students, we're going to use a QR code on a flyer to be distributed in the school, so the kids can just use their camera, put the QR code, we'll tie it into our website, and it'll be an online survey that they can just do right there.
Okay.
And we're looking at like eight to 10 questions, nothing that's going to be too...
Yeah.
Too lengthy for them.
Something I just personally would caution is the survey type of stuff with kids under 18. Most surveys, at least that I've, I've researched and the survey classes I've taken, if you answer anything that says you're under the age of 18, it immediately kicks you out of the survey and says, you know, thank you for your response, or something like that. So I think it's important to ask those demographic questions early, because it's really difficult with kids under 18. You know, you have the legal aspect of their parents would need to consent, that kind of stuff. And then also, you know, just, just the amount of responses. So I think some good demographic questions early would definitely be necessary to kind of ensure the validity of it. And then my main focus from the presentation is something that we talked about at a work session, I think I brought up last fall, which is the business survey. I'm really excited to see that done. I think, you know, who better to tell us than what our CRA needs and the businesses within them? So my just questions are, how straightforward is it, is it going to be? Is it going to be like, hey, we're with the city, what can we do to help you with your business? What can we be doing better? What are our current strengths helping your business? Those kind of questions?
We're going to have multiple choice. We're going to have, on a scale of 1 to 10, you know, how would you rate city services? How would you rate this? How would you rate that? Do you know that you're in a CRA? I don't even know if some of them know that they're in, in the area. We're going to ask them if they are aware of the facade grants, aware of them, if they're aware of the, any of the incentive grants. We're going to ask them if they have any challenges in their business. We're going to ask them about their workforce, their employment. So those are kind of the type of questions that we'll be asking. But we're trying to keep it less open-ended and more either rating it on a scale of 1 to 10, how would you rate these different climate areas in the CRA?
But is there going to be like one open-ended or short-answer question that says?
There'll be open-ended questions.
Or maybe even like a rank order question, where it's, hey, rank, how important the following is to you, parking, you know, facade grants, that kind of stuff. Again, that's one where I think it's going to be really important as far as the response rate for the survey. Because if we do this survey, we put all this work into it, we put it out there, and it gets like a 35% response rate or something like that, I mean, it's worthless. We, we can't do anything with that because we didn't reach enough people. So as far as the online survey goes, how are we going to distribute that? Is that going to be like, hey, we'll contact the Chamber of Commerce, the merchants, we'll work with them, we'll get it all out there, and we'll have one-time links? Because the problem with some links is that, you know, if I get the link and I'm Joe Schmo and I want to take the survey, even though I may not own a business, I can say that I did. How, how are we going to make sure that each business gets one shot at it?
We probably will utilize, you know, the, the Chamber and the merchants, but we'll be sending it directly by email to those businesses and property owners.
Okay. And will we do any door-to-door as well? Because I think that might be important for some business owners, where it's like, hey, if I'm going to get an email, I don't have time to respond to that, I'm a busy business owner.
We can do, yeah, we can do door-to-door.
Okay. I feel like anything we can do to make sure, make it as easy as possible for people to give feedback, that's going to help the response rate. And then my last question is just the timetable on it. When are we going to get that survey out?
We're putting it together now, so it shouldn't be, shouldn't be too long. We should be able to have it out by the end of the month or April and be able to report back in May.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? You know? Thank you. And we're now going to, item number four, no, excuse me, item number three. The highest and best use analysis final report.
Thank you. Just for some background, back in December of 2018, the board authorized the city to apply for a grant from Forward Pinellas for a highest and best use study for the West Tarpon Avenue properties. And it was really spurred on by the CRA's purchase of the Sunbay Motel and the, you know, the expenditure of those dollars. We felt it was incumbent to be good stewards of those tax dollars and do what we can to find out what could be done with those properties. And looking at both of them, not just the CRA property, because we know we can't really do anything with ours without the adjacent property, and the adjacent property owner will probably have difficulty doing anything with that without ours. So we put those two parcels together and applied for the grant. We were looking for some data and some strategic guidance for the future, as we know that the CRA board will look at some point in doing something with that property. So that was the, the impetus for applying for that grant. We received the grant, and we, through that grant, we've got our consultant who did the study. We've had two public, public meetings on them, one to introduce it to the public, and then the second meeting to talk a little bit further about the concepts, when they had some concepts. And that latest one was in February. So with that, the report is now finished, and there's no action needed on this. We've got Eric Liff from Lambert Advisory to, to present the report to you. And, you know, after that, if you have any questions. But again, this is for information, and we hope it's good data that the CRA board and the city can use moving forward, not only for these parcels, but for the wider area.
Thank you, Karen. Again, my name is Eric Liff. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Our firm, Lambert Advisory, completed the highest and best use analysis associated with the grant. I, as you can see, the, we had distributed the report with all of the documentation, methodology, analysis, and findings. And so what I'm going to do here quickly, I'll just go through kind of the high, you know, highlights, if you will, and then obviously be available for any questions. I think the best way to start this discussion is actually to provide and just emphasize what the highest and best use study is. It is the reasonable, probable, and legal use of vacant land or improved property which is physically possible, appropriately supported, financially feasible, and that results in the highest value. So there's, there's really, it is, you know, steeped in economic valuation, if you will, but it also takes into consideration the appropriateness and, and the uses within the area and that, that make, you know, and it's appropriate and desirable as well. So let me take you real quickly through our approach and our process. It is an independent evaluation, very similar to appraisal, although very, you know, I'm going to make it clear, this is not an expression of value and appraised value. This is more or less through a residual land evaluation, but it's all an independent study. We use primary sources of information when we go out and do field interviews of property owners. We did meet with stakeholders, and we also use secondary resources of information for some higher-level researches, such as a CoStar or a CB Richard Ellis, some of the bigger real estate companies to get the trends. I think that it's important, though, to note, while the, you know, this is done independently, the city did undertake, as Karen had mentioned, two public meetings. So we did introduce this process to, to the public and, and receive input in terms of, in terms of some of the desires, if you will, for, for, for this property. The key components of the highest and best use evaluation, and I'll just kind of go through this quick, it's really comprehensive, regional and, and local economic market assessment, demographics, real estate market assessments. We look at the supply and demand commit, conditions among the key uses that are appropriate for the site, residential or potential, you know, potential residential, office, retail, and, and hotel. And from there, we look at the market and understand what is the demand for each of these uses as it applies to. What we look at is kind of the trade area, the broader area from which this property would, would capture demand. And then, you know, and then kind of understand what the, what the, kind of the envelope for development is based upon those demand parameters. Then we move forward with working with CGA and kind of in creating alternative concepts to test the viability based upon the market. And that, obviously, you have to do within the regulatory framework of what is given to us and what exists today. And then lastly, we do a financial evaluation. At this point, it's relatively, and we'll talk about this a little bit, it's relatively high level, because we don't go through the cost analysis of construction, but we certainly have benchmark industry and the information that gets us to be able to, to get to a pretty good point of, 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 you know, identifying land value. I think it's important also to note that, as Karen had mentioned, there is, we're not making any recommendation. The goal of this is to put out as much information for the city and the stakeholders and the residents to understand what their opportunities are for the property in terms of value, and what does that mean? You know, in turn, especially as we look at alternative uses, where we're looking at revenue generating. But then there's also a discussion of, of other uses that might be introduced. So it does, it just hopefully provides you with enough information to make certain decisions as you move forward with, with planning for this property. I also wanted to note that, you know, I, I think it's also important that as part of this process, we did want to make sure that we provided the city with information pertaining to economic and market and real estate conditions within the downtown CRA to hopefully, you know, I know that there's a lot of planning, and Karen, with, with all of the investment, provides the data needed to hopefully provide, you know, give it more information to you and understand where some of the opportunity is going forward, and maybe some, you know, short-term or longer-term planning efforts. In terms of the market findings, what is, you know, as, as this is guided by the market, the residential sector is the strongest sector within this area. Residential sales, both single-family and townhouse condos have been relatively strong for the past few years, both in terms of, in terms of volume of sale and, and pricing. You've got new, new townhome product that we've observed that's pricing above $350,000. They're kind of in, kind of the coastal communities and, and those with amenities, but certainly attainable within a desirable location. And the rental market is stable, though we believe the rental rates are relatively sensitive to new development. They're not quite at that level, though we do know, obviously, there is new development out there with the Mir's Crossing. A large 236-unit development probably would absorb a lot of the demand over the short term. The retail environment, as you know, and we all read about, is, is, is going through a major transition, to say the least. You know, from a broader perspective, obviously, you know what's happening with the malls and the bigger stores and the impact of online. But the one bright spot is what you're seeing is lifestyle real, retail that's coming in. And you can see it actually through the retail and the, you know, that Karen had pointed out, and the restaurants, where there's activity around it and there's more entertainment, entertainment and, and a longer stay. So I think that, that bodes very well for, for the downtown CRA and, and, and this property. Office development is very, has been very modest. The market is somewhat, it's, it's, it's stable, but it just hasn't really moved. Rates are still relatively low, low in terms of being able to support new construction. You haven't had much new development for over 20 years. Now there is some new development in the making, mostly though medical-related. So not, you know, you gotta, you look at the use and how it pertains to the, the downtown area and the CRA and this property and kind of see if, if, if in fact, that does fit in with, with, with a desirable use and whether it creates any value. Lastly, hotel, hotel market, I just say, has kind of cruised along. Again, in this market, there has not been any new development for the past 20 years. Now you are seeing a new development in the Holiday Inn that's being introduced to the market. Again, I think, you know, hotel really is positioned along, at least in critical mass, would be positioned along the major quarters where you have accessibility and, and accessibility. In terms of the highest and best use evaluation, focusing then on what we determined to be the highest, you know, some of the strongest uses, that being residential, we looked at the zoning that currently allows for 12 units per acre on this property, which is a, it's a 0.58, just over a half an acre in size. So you could have six units on the property. However, there is a potential for creating up to 22 acres or 12 units on the property in this transect if you do, if you do engage in the process of TDRs, and we can get into that. But right now, we're staying within confines of what can be built, and it's relatively modest in terms of residential and six units. And then we also have ability to create some commercial space, so we've integrated that in. And what we've done now is we said, okay, let's look at two potential programs. Let's look at a program that's a, you know, pushes density a little bit harder and says, okay, let's put some ground floor retail in and maybe some, you know, upper-level residential condominiums and try to, and, and kind of make this into a mixed-use development. And then the second one, we said, okay, let's, let's not intensify, go with the, the, what is basically the strongest value in terms of your residential, which is townhome, and see, you know, minimize that, but create nice, bigger units and say, six townhomes on the development, and see what that brings us. So in terms of concept one, again, when I talk about residual land value, it's, it's kind of order of magnitude because costs are so important, but we do have an understanding of where the market is in terms of the performance side. Concept one, where you've got the mixed-use land is in the range of $400,000 for this, you know, the, the valuation that would come out of this is about $400,000. In concept two, it's kind of in the, the low to mid $200,000 range. A lot of that, obviously, related to the higher density and the creating more revenue-producing uses in the retail that kind of gives you that added value. Under concept one, if we go and look at that specifically, it generates, I believe it was 2.7 million in total construction costs, and that's where we would basically put that in terms of value and, and added, and added land value. Would generate about $33,000 in annual net new taxes to the CRA. I think right now, the property is valued at $322,000. And then what we say is actually that we believe that it would, there would be an additional $12,000 to $20,000 in, in net taxable revenue coming to the city from the, from its improvements and the impact on surrounding properties. And I'm going to discuss that in, in one minute. Then we looked at alternative options. You know, there's, there is obviously strong input and, and desire for open space and, and certainly, you know, given the surrounding uses, to maintain as, as park or open space. And so we looked at this and said, okay, you know, it, it's very hard to quantify, but there is an impact from parks and open space on surrounding properties. And we've done some case study work for underlying in Miami and some work in Pompano Beach and others, and it's really just case study, there is no, it is, it is very complex, but we've understood that, and I'm going to kind of boil this down as quick as I can, that that basically property, retail, commercial, commercial properties within a, within a half-mile, I'm sorry, 500 feet of a property, and residential properties within a third of a mile are primarily impacted. And the values can increase anywhere between 2%, 2% and 5%. And it's kind of laid out in there. And really, this goes beyond the scope, to be honest with you, in this process, but I wanted to make that introduction, because it is important to know that there is, that there is a value that, you know, in open space. So if, if we were to look at that and say, in the same methodology, it would generate about $12,000 to $20,000 in, in new tax revenue to the city. However, it's also important to note that there would have to be some capital investment to create that parks and open space that would make it a desirable location and, and a desirable park with, with some kind of amenities and foliage and so forth. So you've got to realize there would be an offsetting cost to be able to get to that, that, that point. The other, the other option was, you know, we've heard was the relocation of this Alfred House. And so we didn't look at that. I mean, that, that requires its own cost analysis. But the fact is, if that were an opportunity, that would be, again, another capital outlay to the city. And to be honest, if it were to be used as perhaps a recreation or some type of event space, that would be a great, you know, even an additional, you know, in, in investment by the city. And typically, what we're seeing is, in, in most cases, the, you know, event, public event space really does not, it has a lot of difficulty maintaining revenue neutral. They really run deficits. The city would probably need to, likely have to, you know, feed the operation throughout the year. So with that, I conclude the, kind of the summary and then available for any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I also like to thank the Forward Pinellas for providing us the, the grant of $25,000 to be able to do this analysis. You provided us with two concepts. Concept number one, which is six condominiums on the top and retail on, on the bottom. Is that the more favorable option, do you think, for the area?
Well, it's, it's, it's not a matter, I can't opine on whether it's favorable. Well, it's, it's, it's not a matter, I can't opine on whether it's favorable. I, I would only go again by what I was tasked to do in terms of a highest and best use. In terms of evaluation, then it would be more favorable. If you're talking about value and accretive value from a fiscal standpoint, then it's more, then it's more valuable. Again, it's up to the community and its desires to see what they would want on that site. But in terms of a highest and best use, it's more favorable from a highest and best use fiscal economic standpoint, yes.
The, the other question that I have is, the analysis included the possibility to use a property as open space. And you also said that it will increase the value of the properties anywhere from 2% to 5%.
Correct.
And that would generate $12,000 taxes to the area. How much area did you cover to come out, to come up with these calculations?
It's, and I can, and again, I apologize, it's, I can, I can go on this for a long time, I can go on every piece of this for a long time, but, and kind of laid it out. The, the, what we've learned in our, in our case studies is that the most affected properties are commercial properties within 500 feet of that property and residential properties within one-third of a mile. Those are the most impacted from the case studies we can tell.
I see.
And so basically then we look at that and the GIS, right, and we download the, the property database and we kind of grow those out anywhere between 2% and 5%, and that's what generates the, the $12,000 to $20,000 in that revenue.
Would you think that if it's an open space, it should be calculated based on the walking distance, probably a mile?
I mean, I, it's not, it's not my, yeah, again, I only go by, it's got to be by case study.
I'm just asking, yeah.
It's, it's very, very hard to tell. I, I, no, I actually think, you know, maybe it would extend to a half mile, but I don't think beyond that, to be able to do it from a fiscal and be able to attribute that to its value. I, I mean, I don't think so. But again, I got to go with my case studies and kind of what we've.
Yeah, if you extend that instead of 500 feet to a half a mile, how much do you think increase will have in, in terms of a increase of a property?
It'd be very, it's very hard to say because I'd have to look at what the property praiser's database has in terms of the value, because it's assigned to the value that's within that area. But it, it sounds like if you're increasing it 20%, say, then, you know, theoretically values we could, could have increased 20%, but I can't, I can't say definitively.
The reason I'm asking this question is, if we go with a concept one or concept two, which is condominiums, and concept one has retail on the bottom versus that if it's an open space, that probably it comes about even, would you think?
No, no, you mean from a financial standpoint?
Financial, yeah.
No, it would be, it wouldn't because you, the, first of all, given that space right now, I would have to attribute some of that improvement because there would be some streetscape and sidewalk improvement. So I think that needs to get, that redevelopment concept also needs to get the benefit of that improvement to the surrounding area. So I would add that on to the $33,000 that the property, that the concept one development on its own, the residential and retail is generating, so I would add that on. So fiscally, from a fiscal standpoint or purely an economic standpoint, it would be concept one. And don't forget, and again, I don't, not to interrupt, but remember, to get the park into a, into a condition to be able to, to have the impact on the surrounding properties, they were saying, whether it's 500 feet, a third of a mile, and if you wanted to extend beyond that, the city would have to make some kind of improvement. You can't just have it as, as open space. It would have to be some kind of improvement in terms of foliage and kind of landscaping and so forth. So, you know, you would net that out of the, the net tax.
I just want to make it clear that even though that we have all the scenarios, two properties are belong to a private person. So it's private-owned, it's not a city property.
Correct.
So, you know, we're discussing here, but this, don't know if the, that owner of properties are actually going to be interested to sell or to do something with that.
But, and I totally agree, and we've, you know, we've had to, we've addressed that obviously before and talked about it, but I think it gives the city a very good understanding. And I think through even some of the, you know, the, I would imagine that there's, you know, an opportunity maybe to approach them and do a joint development where the city, you know, you can share in the responsibilities and kind of create the plan that you want to see.
Yeah. The reason I bring this up because a couple of years ago, I met with the owner of the two properties, along with our economic development manager, Ms. Karen Lemons, and the owner shared with us his plans that he was actually interested to build a mixed-use in there because he can't do his part either unless he uses the, the city-owned property.
Correct.
We have to work together.
They need to, yes, one benefits the other, certainly does, without doubt.
Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Vice Mayor Terry Affini.
Thank you. Mr. Luth, I appreciate your presentation tonight. I can imagine how hard it is to come into a close-knit community like Tarpon Springs and make a presentation in terms of highest and best use, especially not being from here. So I can appreciate that. I certainly believe that some of the highest and best use analysis is relatively subjective in terms of what we're trying to study. Just for a little bit of perspective, I didn't see anything about who Lambert Advisors is in the backup, so could you give some qualifications to the company?
Sure. We are an economic and real estate consulting company. We're based out of Miami. We do, you know, our focus is community, heavy community development. We're, we're both with the public and private sector. I mean, just off the top of my head, I would say about 75% of our work is with the public sector, community development, CRAs, and a growing discipline in public-private partnership structuring. We've worked with probably, oh, I don't know, well more than 50, 70 municipalities throughout the state and we're community development organizations, and our practice extends nationally and internationally as well. We've also worked with some of the largest developers in the U.S. and as well as the region, like a Related or a Swire Properties, Madison Marquette, so, you know, doing feasibilities and kind of joint development structuring with them as well.
And y'all do private development yourselves?
We do not. No, we're purely consulting.
Understood.
Correct, yeah, purely consulting.
Okay, thank you. So I'm a little bit disappointed that the study didn't include all of West Harpen Avenue. My understanding, when we accepted the grant from Ford Penellas, that it was for West Harpen Avenue from Alter 19 to the bayou. I can understand why we focused in, you know, specifically on these, on these parcels, but I was hoping for more so of a, like a collective analysis of the entire basically block. So I guess that's something that we could potentially regroup on in the future, not necessarily with your, your firm, but as a board. So, you know, some of what was, is presented is, is helpful, I guess, in terms of some numbers and some market research. I'm sure we'll be able to refer back to this at a future date. Personally, I feel at the last public meeting, I attended, I had to attend a private event in Dunedin, and a lot of people want to compare this site to some mixed-use retail and residential in downtown Dunedin.
Which we were.
Over by Bon Appetit, right? Which, for me, is not necessarily comparing apples to apples. I felt that that night when I was there while this meeting was going on, that if you were to try and replicate the same thing that everybody wants to potentially compare to and, and put that right on this parcel in the golden, in the golden crescent, that it wouldn't be compatible. So for me, I'm looking for something that is a lot less intensive, maintains more open space and potentially has some form of a event or gathering area. And I think that that will help tie in the downtown to the, to Craig Park. A lot of people want to talk about and reflect on Mother Mears Park and what that was like back in the day. And obviously, it was a lot different because we had a railroad and less cars on the road, et cetera. And a lot of people want to try and replicate that, which I think is great. And I think that this is a great spot for it, being that it's only a block away, and it will help tie into Craig Park. So we'll look forward to that discussion in the future, but for now, thanks for your presentation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carter?
Just to echo what Vice Mayor talked about, I, I had the desire to see the all west end too. I think one of the issues was that we only received a $25,000 grant instead of the higher-rated grant, so they said they're only going to do part of it. But I, I would like to see the whole west side as well. I don't have any questions on your presentation. I appreciate the information. It's nice to have this, some ammunition from the city side to show some of the stats of what it could be and what it could look like. So thanks for your presentation.
Thank you. Commissioner Donnell?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you for your presentation and all your work as well. For those of you in the audience and watching at home, if you want to go online and get this back up, I mean, it's over 60 pages of data specifically on that area, so I think it's really useful. Being that I think the data is so useful, I just wanted to go over a couple of the data points real quick. Do you have the PowerPoint up in front of you, or do you have like the sheets or anything?
No, I have a report, hard copy report, and that's all I have with me.
It'll memorize.
Exactly. Well, that's fine. Do you have page five of your report with you?
I do.
Couple clarifying questions about some of the data. So on, on page five, it mentions some of the retail space, and it talks about how much lower our average asking rent is for retail space and some of these other factors. I just, I was curious, when it comes to the averages in Pinellas County, do you find that it's kind of skewed because of places like downtown St. Pete or Clearwater Beach?
Sure. I mean, there are markets that, 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 you know, have a, an influence on value. But then that, you know, when, if you were just trying to do a comparison of, of market rates between areas, it's going to factor in what, you know, obviously a CBD, like a, you know, St. Pete versus a, a Tarpon Springs or some, or other areas. So that does factor in. But, you know, at this point, we're just trying to understand kind of comparatively where the rates, where the rates stand. More important though is, and, and the trends are in there, I think we talk about kind of where the, where the growth, you know, where rate growth and, you know, the great growth trends. I think that's the more important and understand where the great, you know, if it's, you know, it's kind of been a little bit more stable, say, in this, in this market compared to, to St. Pete, even though St. Pete has the higher value.
Yeah, sure. And again, I apologize asking for such specific information on some of these details. I just think that part of our value of having this $25,000 report is the data that you guys collected and compiled in these 60 pages. Also on page 10, if you can go to page 10. Oh, shoot, I guess it's not page 10. Regardless, you, you conducted six stakeholder interviews, and it said it was helped, helped by city staff to identify the stakeholders.
Yes.
My question is just, why, why do we only do six stakeholder interviews?
That's, I mean, we, we came up and we decided that we were going to hold meetings. I think it was a full-day set of meetings, and so we were able to contact six. That's just the, 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 kind of the stakeholders that we had worked with the city to identify. It's not the only stakeholders in the, in the market because we did talk to industry representatives, some of the developers, property representatives, leasing companies and so forth. So it went beyond just those six in terms of stakeholder, but we were collectively and just identified six. Again, in the, you know, given the parameters of the study, you know, really we were, our focus, we usually only do kind of the, the field research and talking to the developers and the operators themselves, but in this case, we wanted to extend some stakeholders at least to get that input.
Okay.
And then, and obviously the, the public meetings were helpful as well, where people were able to come forward and give us some input.
And then page 18, this is my last question about the specifics of it. Can you help me understand figure 11 a little bit better? So is this really saying that out of all the overnight visitors in Pinellas County, we're only getting 3.3% of them to stay in Tarpon Springs?
If that's, that's from the CBB, so that's, that CBB provided data. So, you know, that's, that's what they're calculating is that, yeah.
Wow, that's disappointing. I mean, that's really low, but that's, that's again, a number to keep in mind.
But, you know, I think a lot of that is driven by, you know, there's, there's, again, it can be very complex in terms of identifying a daytime visitor versus an overnight. Obviously, this area is a little bit hampered by the overnight because of the, you know, the lack of overnight product, right, hotels.
Yeah, absolutely.
There, there are a number of hotels, but they're relatively small and comparatively to other markets. It's, so I think that, I think that factors in, in largely. But I would imagine if you started digging into data, probably daytime visitor is very strong in terms of because of the.
And these are annual numbers?
Yes.
Okay. So again, just to clarify for the public and the audience, that's saying that Pinellas County gets over 6 million overnight visitors a year, and Tarpon Springs only gets 200,000 of them. So that's, I mean, that's a pretty wild statistic. As far as the two concept goes, the mixed-use concept seems to be a trend of a lot of downtowns happening right now. I'd like to go more unique route to Tarpon Springs. I don't know how well a mixed-use would, would fit there. I mean, again, I know these are just concept designs, but, I mean, I'm just thinking of, you know, them throwing the cross for Epiphany, and then in the background, it's a mixed-use with like a Jamba Juice downstairs or something like that. I mean, it's just, you know, it's, it's hard to picture. The townhomes, and again, I appreciate your work on this, I understand that this is just the highest and, and best-use analysis, but townhomes are probably the last thing I'd like to see there. I think it'd be very out of place, given the historic nature of our downtown. Also, I, I just think this would have been a lot of trouble to go through so that six people could have townhomes, you know, right there. You know, so, so just as, as far as kind of showing my cards where I'm leaning, having not seen anything and having the knowledge in mind that, you know, there, there is privately-owned property there, I'd be more open to like an expansion of Craig Park or Green Space, something of that nature. But again, I know we're early on in the process, so, other than that, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further comments on this item? Peter Delacas, 514 Ashland Avenue. Quickly, on the annual report, there was a little map of the CRA, and if you look at it closely, it does include Manatee Village Plaza. On the first page of your little preview, and I'm not going to speak to the report, but this is the only place I have a place to enter this in, says part of the analysis, public meetings were held December 4th, 2019. Pay attention, Jeff. I have here police report, number of them, and if any of you are interested, I've asked the clerk to keep it in city, in the clerk's office for your preview. 64 pages worth, many of them duplicative. So I'm going to read as quickly as possible what occurred on December 3rd. Because the folly of this, what I call, you know, you see the debt calendar where the debt goes up. Well, the folly of the purchase of this, the debt keeps going up, the money spent into it, you're going to talk $12,000 a year about leases next, but you're, haven't solved the basic problem. Charlie got killed, somebody else got killed at Sun Bay. You felt like, got to do something, let's buy the Sun Bay. But here we go. This is reporting Elio Michael Trill. On December 3rd at approximately 2:42 PM, dispatch advised a call at the Tarpon Inn located 110 West Tarpon Avenue regarding a male with blood on his face waving a knife and yelling. At the time, I was near the intersection of Pinellas Avenue and Tarpon Avenue and immediately responded. At approximately 2:43 PM, I arrived on scene, observed several people in the parking lot near motel rooms, however, none of the individual matched description of white male wearing no shirt and had blood on his face. As I stopped my vehicle, male later identified as Robert Pashogba began waving at me and advised the male had pulled a knife on him and had entered room 103, had notified dispatch and other units so additional officers could assist. A female later identified as Deborah Warren, who was uninvolved in the incident, was standing nearby on a bicycle and approached, advised that she had called and observed the male with a knife. She stayed the male gone in room 103. I requested that she stay on scene but leave the immediate area of the room. As I was retrieving, my department issued pepperball launcher and projectiles from my vehicle. Robert stated he wanted to tell me what happened, then mentioned that his wife was also in room 103. Initially, I concerned about the welfare of the female and the tension of the male and concerned of a possible hostage situation. However, the male then related that he needed to tell me about the incident in case he goes to jail. I asked why he would go to jail, which he responded that he beat up the other male. I asked if he had beat him up after he pulled a knife on him, thinking he was referring to self-defense, but Robert advised that he had beat him up before because he'd come back to the apartment to find the male and his wife showering together. He said it was at that time he grabbed the male, pulled him out of the shower. The male later identified as Michael Stevens, later had armed himself with a knife, started chasing Robert. Just prior to my arrival, he entered the motel room again where Robert's wife is located. Robert gave consent for me to enter the room, but not have his key card on him stating that it was still in the room. I made contact with the motel manager, provided me with a master key. I had maintained position to the east of the motel room with an unobstructed view of the door. Other units began to arrive, to include Sergeant Osarzic, Officer Hammond, and Officer Melton. I advised that I had less lethal coverage and requested coverage with firearms as all, as well. I was utilizing the pepperball launcher with inert VXR projectiles. Other responding units provided cover with their handguns. We then approached the door and observed that it was not fully closed. As I kicked the door, which opened into the room and to the left opened immediately observed Michael holding clothing and a folding knife in the locked open position so the blade was visible. Sergeant Osarzic and I immediately gave loud, clear verbal commands for Michael to drop the knife, which he did. I then ordered him to walk forward out of the room and into the walkway where he was instructed to take a kneeling position. Michael complied and was secured in handcuffs. We observed that Michael had blood coming from a relatively large gash.
Delakis, your time has expired.
Thank you. May I have your two minutes, Dolly? Anybody here willing to donate two minutes to hear the rest of this story?
Thank you, Mr. Delakis.
Okay. Well, if you'd like to hear the rest of the story, it is available at the clerk's office for your reading. The point is, we didn't solve the problem buying the Sun Bay.
Everybody's face. Anita Prose, 901 Bay Shore Drive. The motion was made long ago about discussing buying the Sun Bay and the property next to it. Well, we didn't have a discussion about what they wanted for the property next to it, and we don't know what was discussed. But I don't care for this report. We're talking about historic property, the Golden Crescent, where all our beautiful Victorian homes are. As you know, I want the Safford House there. We have a beautiful historic home. It's up on a hill, down a road that nobody goes to see. We have not discussed how we can move it by the property that the community wants. We haven't discussed how we can make money and give services out of that home to the community. We haven't discussed the beauty of what we've got. Let's not give it away. They do the economic development on it, Miami, West Palm Beach, they're not Tarpon Springs. We've lost a packing house tonight. Let's not lose our Safford House and that piece of property to finish the Golden Crescent with what belongs to be there and make it what Tarpon is known for. In the paper, there was a picture of the Golden Crescent years ago, last week, what it means to our community, what it means in the state of Florida, our reputation. How come we're not talking about that? How come we're not talking to the people who want to have a historic area there? Who were the stakeholders that they spoke to? Did they talk to stakeholders in the Golden Crescent, in the fruit section, out in Tarpon Springs, Greettown, the older sections of Tarpon, what we have here? Economic value. What do we, think about what we're going to give away here? I don't want condos there. I don't even want a business down there next to those homes, and that will trash the area of our Golden Crescent. Let's do a study, please, on moving the Safford House. And I bet you, anything that we can get donations throughout the community to help buy the property, move the Safford House, the Safford House can be moved, and there's grants. We need a grant department here in this city that studies all the grants that we can go for. We're losing money every day. We're not applying to anything. Making money and taxes isn't the only thing in this community. Yes, it is important, but we're losing and trashing what we have to make something beautiful. And the Golden Crescent, as you know, I've talked about it for many, many years. Let's not lose what we've got. Let's put the corsage at that corner, which is the Safford House, let the community use it, let our businesses offer services of bringing in food for affairs, let our organizations use it. Let's leave something to our grandchildren, our nieces and nephews, that they can be proud of. They can't be proud of condos down there with businesses. Manatee Village, nothing's there, just a few businesses. We've got the ugly condos on the other side of it, and nobody likes them. We have empty places that businesses need to go in in Tarpon Springs. We need to fill this all up with businesses before we put something else down there and have empty buildings. Please, Mayor Alahuzis, let's do a study on the Safford House being moved there, and let's do the right thing and not lose what we've got.
Thank you.
Costa Vatico, 538 West Cedar Street. Mayor, my wife Darlene is here. If I need more than four minutes, she's consented to giving her two minutes to my time. I don't think I'm going to need it, but I just wanted to state that. I appreciate what the consultants have done. I think they did a lot for $25,000, surprisingly a lot. They may have not answered the questions that the commission had, but I think that they did what they were tasked to do. I very much appreciate all the sentiment of the commission. It's the sort of comments that I personally like to hear. I thought it was going to go one way completely, which is not the case. What I wanted to do is provide some additional information that is embedded in the study, but really, there isn't a whole lot there. I want to point out the fact, both historical and economic, I want to point out the fact that this is not virgin land that we're talking about. Something was there before. And if you look at the Sanborn map from 1919 that you have in front of you, the larger the two parcels that are owned by Mr. Hoffman, you had the Woodruff home there. Herbert Woodruff was an associate and a friend of Hamilton Diston. He was also a better friend of Jacob Diston, which was Hamilton's younger brother. And he was also friends and a business associate of George Clemson. George Clemson is the one who built the house on the corner of Grand and Spring Boulevard that Mary Anexi currently owns. The smaller home that you see on that smaller parcel of Mr. Hoffman's, I suspect, was built by Richard Clemson, which was Mr. Woodruff's brother-in-law. His sister was married to Mr. Clemson. So I wanted to point out that we're dealing with a very, in my opinion, a very historic piece of property. Mrs. Chapman, Alice Woodruff Chapman, kept this property until 1958, her parents' home, and both those houses were demolished about 1968, best that I can tell. Again, it's a very historic piece of property. As far as the study goes, I appreciate the comments that are made by the consultants, and I know they're not recommending anything, but I really think a multi-story, mixed-use building here at this location is really not appropriate. And let me just suggest something to you. That parcel to the south of where I show the Woodruff home is owned by, I think, right now, I think it's owned by an investment property fund, which is still within the Sykes family, but it was Ms. Louis Sykes' home. And that property is actually the exact same size as the property we're talking about. It's also valued at the exact same amount, assessed at exactly the same amount, $322,000. It's also got the same zoning as what we're talking about right now. So be careful what you wish for, or at least I don't hear anybody wishing for something like what was proposed as far as the highest use, but be careful. We've got this big piece of property just to the south that's identical to the property that we're talking about now. And if you allow one or encourage one type of development on that, Mr. Hoffman's property, don't be surprised if somebody else comes up wanting the same opportunity for that. The one unintended consequence, I think the consultants have learned from the two workshops or public meetings that occurred, is it's pretty much, when they see these highest uses that are being looked at or being suggested as far as the final report goes, people have this opposite reaction, and it's galvanizing a lot of the residents to some expectation on what they'd like to see on that property. It's very similar to what I've heard you say, kind of inclined to more of an open space, a public space, which I think is good. And the one thing is the Safford House that could be brought there. And I know the consultants mentioned a couple of times that it would take some capital outlay for the city, but I think most of us who have kind of looked at this also recognize that the park and core property could be sold as well.
Your time has expired. We're using the other two minutes. Thank you.
The one thing that was not included in the economic part of the study was the, it was talked about the tax increase to the base because of the new construction. There was a tax increment increase just because of the proximity of the properties near whatever goes on that piece. But what was not looked at, which was beyond the scope of the study, was what the actual tax increase to the base would be from the standpoint of people investing, such as public space being there with the Safford House, of investing money into something like the Tarpon Inn, creating a boutique motel, very similar to what you would have with a Kempton chain. It's just a thought, but I think that's as much a realistic scenario as some of the things that the consultants have brought up. I think that was it. I just wanted to touch a little bit on the history. I wanted to bring up the Sykes property and point that out to you. And also, I think that there are public space, and it does have economic benefits that weren't really discussed this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Do we have any other commission comments? Thank you very much. Thank you. Item number four is a second lease amendment for 61 West Tarpon Avenue. Staff report. Ms. Lemons?
Thank you. This is the second amendment to the commercial lease at 61 Tarpon Avenue. This is the lease for the building that we created, the Community Redevelopment Center, and the vacant parcels to the west. It was entered into in March of 2018. It was amended for the first time last year in 2019 for another year, and the lease expires now March 30th of this year, and so this is asking for a second amendment. The lease terms are unchanged from the initial terms. And in the past year, obviously, we've got a Community Redevelopment Center there that's used for meetings of businesses, it's used for the merchants, it's used for special event space. We have meetings there with developers and realtors, and people feel comfortable going there, especially downtown business owners that I interact with quite a bit. We've also committed this for an open house for the historic design guidelines, or having an open house later for people to come in and look at the document once it gets too close to its final form. The police department uses it, and it's been used by other organizations. We've had the Pinellas Pasco County Community on Aging meeting there, and we held the stakeholder interviews that were discussed there as well. So that's how the building is used. It's also being used now for First Friday event parking. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Vice Mayor Tarpon, you have any questions?
I just wanted to touch on just more utility of the property, if we're going to lease it. I know that you said we're going to use it for some special event parking. Is that right?
Yeah, it's currently being used for special event parking for First Friday, and then if it's needed for other special event parking.
And do we charge for that parking?
We are actually paying the Boy Scouts. The Merchants Association has an agreement with the Boy Scouts, and so they give money to the Boy Scouts. The Boy Scouts park the cars. So we're not paying anybody, no.
We have plans to utilize it for the art show?
The chamber has not requested anything for the art show.
Okay. You know, I'm in favor of extending the lease. I would even joke with the city manager about this language in here about controlling the property for future, which I think, you know, I know where that comes from. But I would just say that if we're going to lease it, you know, it'd be nice to try and utilize it a little bit more.
Sure.
I don't have an issue with it.
Michelle.
Thanks, Mayor. Karen, this is also used for Epiphany, right?
Yes, it's used for Epiphany.
Point?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and the boat parade?
It's Snow Place. It's a hub for Snow Place, for the volunteers and for staff who are working from 7:00 AM to midnight. And yes, it's used for Epiphany. In fact, law enforcement agencies from all over utilize that for their safe space.
Yeah. To me, it's not too hard to justify spending this amount of money. It's not that much, I don't think, over 12 months to utilize it for some of the special events that the city has. If we had to, I know the property owner in the past has been nice enough to allow the city to use the property at times, or have other organizations use it for parking. But at the end of the day, I think it just makes sense to not take advantage of a property owner in that standpoint. And I think it's a fair lease amount. I mean, it's not that much, maybe a thousand dollars, less than $1,000 a month for leasing that for the city standpoint, to use it from a security standpoint for Epiphany and other events with First Friday. And like you mentioned, I think it's, it makes sense to me. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Not necessarily any questions. More so, just I want to see a decision made on the property. Obviously, we want to reach out to the community and continue to get that kind of input. But, I mean, obviously, our end game here isn't just to keep extending this lease and just have this little outpost, because, I mean, really, it's not, you know, City Hall is not that much further for the downtown business. So, I mean, me personally, I'm prepared to approve it tonight, but I really want to see a decision made on kind of where we're going with this, because I don't want to see it just be an endless lease.
Yeah. I think it's very useful to have the city have a satellite office in downtown. I think it helps the economic development. Karen, you're meeting with a lot of customers there. Also, the police department is constantly there. I see them there every day. You say the Merchants Association, they're using it as well, and parking, as the vice mayor had mentioned, and we're using it in so many different events. I will support that for another year, to lease it for another year, to see what happens with the Huffman's property, because we need to come up with some kind of solution with that.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any public comments on this item?
Costa Vatico, 538 West Cedar Street. I handed out this second photo, which is actually Mother Miras Park. If you look at the center, you'll see the urn that's up there on the intersection right now. That's the best photo I could find. I told the city manager before, I'm very supportive of this lease. I've passed by this property for 50 years. I've been deluged with sign clutter, cars parked on there, trailers parked on there, almost on a daily basis. I think the city's done, it was very wise to rent this property, if not just to keep it clean. The only thing I would like to see is actually extend the lease. I think the city manager has said that this is, I think he's addressed other people, that what we're looking at is a two- or three-year process for this property. I don't know if that's going to be the case or not, but in other words, to make a determination. If that's the case, I'd like to see a little longer lease, and I'd like to see some improvements such as sodding, irrigation, and maybe some landscaping, perhaps something similar to what you have with the Mother Miras Park. It is the gateway to our parks. It is what connects the downtown to Craig Park. If we're going to just continue kicking the can down the street, I think we need to do something more substantive. But at this point, I very much thank you for continuing on with this lease. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Peter Delakis, 514 Ashland Avenue. As you see, you're in a perpetual motion hole. You're dependent on eventually maybe somebody coming to propose something that will mollify everybody, yet you have other constituents who want the city to take the whole property. We're already probably into this over a million. And yet, as I explained, we're still not solving the problem there. As I left off, Michael complied and was secured in handcuffs. We observed that Michael had blood coming from a relatively large gash to the right side of the top of his head. Note, Michael advised that Robert had caused the injury but was not sure what Robert hit him with, thinking it was his hand. I observed a nude, white female sitting on the far bed facing the door with a towel sheet wrapped around her lower body and her breasts exposed. I asked her if she was okay, and she requested she cover up and put on some clothing. The female did not comply and simply sat there staring at me. I advised her numerous times to cover up and... I advised her numerous times to cover up and/or put on clothing, however, she did not do so. Rather, she began to talk with heavily slurred speech, asking what we were doing. From my vantage point just inside the front door, I could see that no other persons were within the living portion of the room. I was able to clear the bathroom area, which had its entrance on the west wall, just inside the front door, then maintained a position near the front door as patrol officers were conducting interviews and continuing their investigation. I requested Detective Scarpotti, who had arrived on the scene to assist when dealing with the naked female, later identified as Kimmy Mahan. It's noted that we had to obtain her name from Richard as Mahan, because Kimmy appeared intoxicated levels, she could either not understand the question, "What's your name," or could not formulate the words. Detective Scarpotti attempted numerous times to persuade Kimmy to put clothing on, however, she would not respond with any actions. Detective Scarpotti advised Kimmy's only statements were slurred and responses were in regard to vampires. I then instructed Detective Scarpotti to find a shirt and place it on her, which she did. EMS had been notified to respond and reference this Michael head injury and evaluate Kimmy for medical assistance. At first, we were one aware of Kimmy had been the victim of a battery as well, although the investigation later revealed that she was not. While waiting for EMS to respond and throughout their time on the scene, Kimmy became more verbal, although much of what was spoken was unintelligible. We were able to understand some, which included repeatedly asking what we were doing, cursing Detective Scarpotti for no known reason, and professing her love to Michael, who she thought was her husband, although she was advised he was not her husband numerous times. Based on the level of intoxication or lack of self-control in regard to alcohol, she continued to attempt to consume it while we were on the scene with her, and her inability to function or care for herself, there was a concern for her safety. Thus, I advised that she would need to be transported to the hospital, consistent with the Marchment Act. TSFR EMS had evaluated her on scene, transported to Advent Health. It also noted that officers had established probable cause for the arrest of Robert for aggravated battery and Michael for aggravated assault. Both were placed under arrest. Robert was transported to Police Department for processing, Michael's transported to Advent Health. From the investigation, it was determined that Robert, Michael, and Kimmy were inside the room drinking alcoholic beverages. As it appeared they had consumed most of the alcohol, Robert went to the store to purchase more. When he arrived back at the location, he found Michael and Kimmy in the shower together. Angry Robert grabbed Michael and began to batter him, ultimately causing laceration gash to Michael's head. After the physical alteration, Michael got dressed to include pants, a hat, and a backpack, armed himself with a knife, began chasing Robert with a knife and placing him in fear of being stabbed. Thus, neither male appeared to act in self-defense. While at the hospital, Detective Scarpotti assisted by standing by with Michael as he was treated for his injuries. Ultimately, Michael received several staples that closed the room during the treatment process. However, Mike would range from appearing angry and cursing to crying, often stating he did not understand why he's being arrested. At one point, a nurse asked me to assist as Michael was being uncorroborative and causing a disturbance. It was noted that Mike was in an area with two other individuals, separated only by drapes, seeking medical attention for injuries and illnesses, thus disruptive behavior could affect him. I entered the room, heard Michael visi, didn't understand why he was arrested. I slowly and clearly explained it to him, as previously noted in this report, and the rest is on file. Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? I hear none. If we have any, do we have any other commission comments and questions? If not, I need a motion.
Motion approved, extend the lease.
I need a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tierpenny?
Yes.
Chair Lewis.
Yes, thank you. Next is item number five, CRA Resolution 2020-01, Building Code Assistance Grant. City Attorney, if you please, read the resolution.
Mayor Commissioners, Resolution 2020-01, a resolution of the City of Tarpin Springs Community Redevelopment Agency, establishing a CRA Building Code Assistance Program Grant, establishing application and guidelines for the administration of the grant, and establishing an effective date. There was reading of Resolution 2020-01 by title only.
Thank you. Staff report?
Thank you, Karen Lemons, Economic Development Manager. This, we discussed at our January 28th CRA workshop, the new Building Code Assistance Program Grant. This would provide grants for interior renovations that are required by building code, fire code, FEMA or other safety-type codes. We have a lot of older buildings, some are being repurposed, some have a change of use. We have some buildings that are retail, and now we've got restaurants coming in. That triggers a whole new building code, and sometimes they need elevators, they need fire sprinkling, they need suppression systems. And if the building owner isn't willing to do it, the tenant usually isn't wanting to pay those capital improvements. So this grant would go a long way, both for new tenants coming into buildings and for owners of buildings to upgrade their properties and to provide that fire suppression, or elevators, or things that they might need to do in order to attract businesses. So it operates the same as the other grants we have, it's a 50% reimbursement. This one is capped at $7,500. And at the January workshop, the funding was approved at $37,500, which would provide for five grants if we had applicants take the full $7,500.
Thank you, thank you, Karen. I was going to say, this is something that you already discussed, and everybody was in favor for it, but this is really a good incentive to bring some of the older buildings that we have up to the code, so they can be utilized and bring more businesses to Tarpin. Do we have any idea how many buildings do we have that they need to be upgraded?
Probably about 10 or 20. No, I mean, I, just today, I talked with somebody who's interested in the old Oxford Tea House, that 118 East Orange Street, and, you know, that building is, pretty much has nothing in it. So we talked about the different incentive grants, so they would qualify for the facade grant for $15,000, they would be able to get this building grant for $7,500, and what they were proposing to do, they could get the restaurant grant for $7,500. So, you know, by bundling these grants together is another help to attracting businesses that qualify. So that's a building, the old cliche building, we know needs fire suppression, and they don't have it. The Court of Two Sisters has been looking to do some things on the upstairs, that's going to require new building code. We've got a couple of buildings that may need elevators. The produce stand on South Pinellas Avenue, we've had lots of people look at that, but that's got FEMA issues, it's got ADA issues. So I think we would be able to go through this, these dollars in a relatively quick way.
Thank you. I'm in favor for it. I think it's, I think it's very good incentive. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. As you know, I'm in support of this, Karen. I just, I do have one thing that I think might be a little problematic within your application, and that's the requirement for all applicants to have a current local business tax. In my experience, in some of these cases, as you're recruiting, you know, these new business concepts that come to these buildings, in a lot of cases, you know, we're taking these grants into consideration and utilizing the grants prior to opening the business. So I just think that that's worth pointing out, and you might want to try and take that into consideration within your application. So, you know, I don't know how someone would already be in business if, for example, they can't go into business because the building's not suitable for whatever building codes, right? So it's advantageous to use the grant monies to bring the building into compliance, so then they can occupy it and get a business license. So I think it's a little bit inconsistent, and you might want to try and rework that a little bit.
We can reword that, that they need to have their business tax license at the completion of...
Yeah, for sure.
Of the grant.
But going into it, I don't think it makes sense.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out.
Finish?
Yes, sir.
Motion call?
I support this, I think it's a great idea. Commend the staff on bringing forward another grant for our CRA to help continue the growth of our CRA district and the growth of Tarpin Springs. So thank you.
Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you. I think this is a really good idea. My only question is more of a theoretical one, just based on the process of how we're doing this. So if 15 people are lined up outside the first day that this is there, and that's ideal, right? I mean, we want people to participate. What's the selection process for this? Is it just first come, first served?
Well, they have to fill out the application, and then they go through the technical review committee. So, and once they're approved, they can move forward on it. If we have 15 people and they all go through technical review and they're all approved, I would come back to you and ask for some more, some more dollars from the CRA.
Gotcha, okay. And as to the vice mayor's point, I would absolutely support that as well. I think the less business taxes, the better, but that's me personally. So I think, you know, if we end up, when we make a motion on this, I'd vote to include that.
There's no business tax at all?
No, just like what you said, upon completion.
Yeah, I mean, I think you've got that, I mean, you're going to have to reword it and rework it anyways, Karen, so you might as well just bring it back at that point, right?
Should have, you just told her to change it that way.
Just change that, and let's make final, that way we can offer that grant. Would you agree with that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that. You finished, Mr.?
Yep.
Okay. Any public comments on this item? Hear none? Need a motion?
Motion to approve, with the exception to reworking the language as it relates to the, all businesses must have a current local business tax. Just trying to reword that to where it makes a little bit more sense.
Okay, good. Need a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tierpenny?
Yes.
Chair Lewis.
Yes. Karen, thank you. Okay, we're now going to item number six, which is the procedure for review and award the proposal for the fourth property, which is 144 East Tarpin Avenue. City Attorney?
Yes, I'll be happy to talk to you about this tonight. As you know, in 2018, an RFP was issued for this property, and ultimately, the proposer backed out of the award of that RFP. Subsequent to that, there was very little interest in the property, even with extensive marketing and discussions with developers. Karen's department, though, put together a general information sheet, and that's, I provided it to you, it's on the desk in front of you tonight. This is the document that is provided to anyone that is interested. It's my understanding that there are two proposals in the pipeline relative to this property, and so that's the reason why this is being brought forward, to give you, to actually to, you know, to get some direction from the commission. As you know, the RFP process was used in the past, the question is whether or not you want to use it again. When you went through the process before, my partner Jay Daniel gave you two memos addressing a couple of issues relative to the RFP process. One was specifically to address the issue of how the presentations would be made if they are going to go through the RFP process. I've, I provided you with that memorandum, it's dated April 23rd, 2018. And in that memorandum, it basically talks about the fact, if it is an RFP, if it is a sealed bid process, then you can use the, or you can use the statute relative to the confidentiality of the presentations being provided to you in a closed-door session. And that is the way that the presentations were made back in 2018, a closed-door session where the presentations were made, but ultimately, you came into the public and to discuss, you know, the presentation, so that you could also receive public comment and ultimately award the bid. Also, in the packet of these three items that I've given you tonight is the memo from Jay relative to the sale of property in the CRA. You'll remember that because the property is in the CRA, there's a requirement that you place an advertisement in a newspaper at least 30 days before you make any award. So there needs to be some thought about that when you go through this proposal process. You can either go through the process where you address the two in the pipeline currently, you can go out for an RFP. In either event, you're going to need to do this advertisement. So I'm not sure that actual, any action needs to be taken tonight. Ultimately, though, Karen is looking for some direction from the commission, whether it's tonight or sometime in the future, as to how you want to approach the two that are in the pipeline. Do you want them to be brought to you directly? Do you want a presentation made? Do you want to go back out for sealed proposals so that everybody gets the same information at the same time? Those are the types of things that you'll probably want to go ahead and discuss. If you do go through with the process of having presentation with the two that are currently in the pipeline, remember that you still have to make it available to anybody else, once you give that 30-day notice in the newspaper. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'm sure that Karen can talk to you about what she has been dealing with, with people, or developers interested in developing this property, or I can answer the questions about the statutes that were, that are addressed in those two memorandums, so.
So actually, we have two different ways that we can do that.
There's a lot of different ways that you can do it. So one way is move through the process right now, look at these two proposals as they're coming through the pipeline. They don't have to be sealed, you can do, have them do a presentation, or you can go back out and tell these two to rethink about their proposals and provide a sealed proposal along with everybody else, once you give the 30-day notice, so that you can do all of them at the same time.
Okay. Or would you have two applicants interested in that?
According to the information I've been provided...
Yes, we have two proposals currently.
Two proposals. And both of them got the same information, and they were given the same opportunities?
Everybody was given this information that was actually from the RFP from a couple years ago. So this was the information that we give everybody when they ask about the property, so that they know what it is that we're looking for, or you'd be looking for in order to evaluate the project, and to be able to make a good decision on it.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Just, my take on it is, I don't think that there's a need for us to go back out to RFP again. This has been years and years and years. So we have two applicants that pretty much have complete, completed the application, so it would be my personal desire to just hear the applicants and select one or the other. As it relates to the 30-day notice, Mr. Trask, being we're going about it in such a way to where it would be initially a lease term, is there still the need to advertise for 30 days, given that we're not going to sell the property in the immediate future and we're just negotiating a lease?
Well, that's what, I haven't heard whether you're going to lease it or sell it. So, I mean, you know, yeah, at some point, you have to make that decision.
So the way it's been structured in the past is that it would be a lease until such time there's, you know, defined improvements made to the property, and at that time, the title will convey. So assuming that's the same circumstance, do we need to advertise for 30 days?
So what the statute says in 163.303A, "Prior to disposition of any real property or interest therein, in a community redevelopment area, any county, municipality, or community redevelopment shall give public notice of such disposition by publication in a newspaper having a general circulation of the community at least 30 days prior to the execution of any contract to sell, lease, or otherwise transfer real property. And prior to the delivery of the instrument of the conveyance with respect thereto under the provision of this section, invite proposals from and make all pertinent information available to private redevelopers or any persons interested in undertaking to redevelop or rehabilitate a community redevelopment area or any part thereof." So to answer your question, whether you sell it or you lease it, you have to advertise it.
What about the advertising in the past? Does that not count?
It needs to be done within 30 days of, or I'm sorry, it needs to be done at least 30 days prior. If you're asking me whether that notice in 2018 should be used for the purpose of this, the answer is no. I would not do that.
Any other questions? Motion call?
So speaking from experience, I really have no desire to go through the RFP process again. I felt it was not beneficial to any party, from the city staff to the CRA board, to the applicants. It was almost embarrassing at times. So not being able to really speak to the applicants until the RFP process started was difficult, in my opinion, from a board member. I felt like the public comment and the public didn't really get to see what was being proposed as well, from a transparency standpoint. So I would avoid and suggest to stay away from RFP process moving forward with this property again, and I would support some type of presentation here in a public setting.
Motion call?
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Can you just explain again how the advertisement would work, as far as what we just spoke of, as far as the 2018 one not counting now?
Okay, so if you're going to do the two presentations of the two that are in the pipeline now, before you can accept either one of them, you're going to have to advertise at least 30 days in advance to allow anyone else to come forward to make a proposal.
Okay. Yeah, I'm fine with that. Obviously, that's encouraged, and I also would not like to go through the RFP process again. again, I think it's been long enough.
I agree with that as well. Again, I'm going to ask the same question. The information that we're giving to the both interested people, that was, it was the same?
Yes.
Okay. Just to make sure that we have no disagreements.
Right. Everybody gets, that's the packet that I gave off to everybody.
It's the same for those two and everybody else during the time it was picked up packets, which has been other ones also.
And several people proposed things, but nobody's brought them back, except for now these two.
And we're going to use the same process as we had the last time, Ms. Forrest, do the presentation, just stuff right?
Well, that's something you can discuss tonight. Before, the proposers were given 20 minutes for a presentation, followed by a question and answer period.
What you have that at?
I'm reading from page two of two, of the memo that Jay had presented to the commission on April 23rd, 2018. It's the second page of that two-page memo. They talked about how that process was going to work.
Okay.
So 20 minutes for a presentation, followed by questions and answers. The presentations would be made based upon the order of when the proposals were received. Only one presenter group would be allowed in the room at a time. Here, I think that because you're not doing it by RFP, you know, it should be open to the public, and the second presenter should be in the room as, the same as the, the first presenter, so they get the information at the same time. So, and then you would make a decision based upon those presentations preliminarily, because you're going to have to advertise again, that 30-day publication relative to those two proposals.
All right. Yes.
Have another comment?
Yeah, of course.
So, being that we have two applicants that are, basically have turned in proposals, or at least within a couple of days, is my understanding, right?
Yes.
Would the board see it fit to go ahead and initiate the advertisement, so we can get the ball rolling, being that we already have two applicants, and we have to wait 30 days to begin with? So say Monday?
That was my understanding.
What's that?
That, you know, to start the advertisement as soon as we can.
Yeah, I mean, I think we would probably need the board's direction to do that, right? But if we, if the understanding is, is that we have two applicants who are basically near complete within their application, and we have to wait 30 days to begin with, right, Mr. Attorney?
That's right.
Okay, so why not go ahead and initiate the advertisement on Monday? So the clock will start ticking, because we can't even hear it for 30 days. So if the applicants are in...
So there's two ways to do it. You can do the 30-day notice, and then have the presentations made sometime after that 30 days, or you can move forward with regard to the two that you currently have. You just need to understand that if anybody comes in, in that 30-day gap, that you would also have to hear that sometime in the future. Obviously, it would be smarter to hear them all at the same time.
Right, right.
So nobody is getting the upper hand on, so those people that are looking at the advertisement can't look at the proposal number one, or proposal number two, and take advantage, basically, of, you know, what they're seeing by making a proposal that would basically outweigh the proposals that you currently have. So my suggestion is, do the presentation after the 30-day window is passed, for everyone, including the two that are currently in the pipeline.
I agree, but, but we can't do that until the 30 days has elapsed.
Exactly.
So sooner the better, we start the 30 days.
Sure. But your question was to start immediately the advertisement, so we can...
That would be my, that would be my desire, yeah.
Yeah, I think so, too. Okay.
Okay.
You have anything?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, I'd like to go to the public, public comments.
Coast of Vatico, it's 538 West Cedar Street. I'm going to be a little selfish here. I, I agree with Commissioner Terri Panty, as far as the 30-day notice and the settlement and the rest of the commission. The first real meeting in April is going to be April 28th, I believe, and I think that, I think that's going to be the earliest opportunity that you'll be able to hear any of the presentations, unless I'm wrong, that this will be through the CRA, and perhaps, other than the swearing-in ceremony, which will be April 14th, you could have a CRA meeting after that. So I'd like to be part of this, because we're so close, I guess is what I'm getting at. And then the other question, couple of other questions is, just something on ex-party communications as part of, I, I know that the one group that has proposed something has been, this is their third iteration, I'm sure they've had conversations with commissioners as far as being on their third iteration of answering the mail. One was a letter of intent, second was a, answering the application, which evidently wasn't good enough, and now they're in a whole, you know, just basically putting plans together and everything to try and satisfy the requirements. And if that's the case, and we take a little more informal approach, I, I think that we need to recognize that at some point, the applications need to be deemed complete, and I understand the application process, but right now, it's somewhat nebulous as far as what that means, completing the application process. So I wouldn't want some defect or something on the part of the staff saying, well, you didn't provide this to us, therefore, you're not going to be one of the two proposers on whatever date you choose to have it. So I think that there needs to be a little more clarity on that. One would be the ex-party communication, and number two would be the, what's expected of the respondents at this point, in terms of an application process. And again, from a realistic perspective, unless you decide to have a separate CRA on the night everyone's sworn in, the earliest date would be April 28th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Protus again. I just want to bring before the board, that some may not know, you're on the board, that was a historic building that we lost there. A beautiful historic building, because then, at that time, the city manager and the mayor didn't want to allow us, you weren't on the board then, did not allow us to go and try to, we asked them to let us try to get some grant money to restore the building, and they refused, and gave a presentation to the board at that time, and said, no, no, we're not going to do that, it needs to come down. And the previous owner of a cropless meat market also came and offered to help monetarily to save the building. We lost a beautiful building. And I just, I don't know if you knew that, Commissioner Donovan, or not, but it was a beautiful hardware store years ago, an outstanding hardware store, all the way around, the panhandle, screws, chains, boat equipment that was needed, nails that came there, they ordered from that hardware store. And the, it was a, it was a family that owned it here in town, and we just lost it, because historically, they didn't want to go after any grant money, or to help the owner restore the building, or do anything historically to keep it in town. We lost everything there.
Thank you.
I didn't know if y'all knew that.
Any other public comments on this item? No? Back to us? We need to vote on it, right? We need to have a motion?
So, yeah, so here's some additional information I'm going to need from you. So it was a really good point what Mr. Vatico said, relative to having a completion date for application, so I guess we need to work backwards. So we need to pick a date for the CRA meeting, and then let's pick a cutoff date for when the applications or proposals must be complete. Obviously, you know, that should be at least 10 days prior to the meeting, you know, so that staff can put the, the packages together and, and have it available for you. You, you want your packages at least 10 days prior, too, right? Okay. So if we can pick a date then for the CRA meeting, then we can work backwards from that, but we need the CRA meeting to be at least 30 days out from next Monday, probably. So do you have those dates, Irene, you know, when the next available date would be for a CRA meeting? A commission meeting, for example, in late April?
That would be the 28th.
And what does the agenda look like on that? Do we have any idea how packed it is?
Obviously, with the first meeting being mostly a ceremonial meeting, it is going to be heavy.
Okay, so...
Why don't you have a special night? I mean, it's a pretty big deal, overall, I mean, I wouldn't even say you would have a special meeting on a separate night than a regular meeting night.
But then we have it on 29, on Wednesday, everybody's available the next day.
Why not sooner?
Hmm?
Why not sooner?
I don't think I'm able to.
Well, probably if the ad goes out, you know, even, you know, by the time, you know, we got to get it when the newspaper's going, it's going to be sometime mid-next week, so you're still talking about, you know, 30 days, you're still talking around the week of the 20th to 24th would be the earliest, those 30 days would be up. Because you got to get it in the circulation, so it could be ready Monday, we work on it, it's got to be ready beginning of week, pick the day that goes out, so you're still going to be till that week of the 18, I mean, the 20th of April sometime is the earliest time that 30 days is going to end, so you're probably starting the week of the 27th on, probably about the earliest, I just...
Yeah, today's, today was the deadline to get anything in the paper on the, on Friday. We usually advertise on Fridays in the, we used to be the North Penniles section, that's where all the, that's where all the cities advertise, and they're less expensive on that day.
The 28th, the meeting of 28th, it's going to be a pretty heavy agenda, like you said, it's still a course, so if we have it...
Well, I think the advertisement is probably going to be the...
29th or 30th will be good.
I believe the 29th is Board of Adjustments.
Yeah.
Why not, why not have a first meeting in May?
That would solve all the problems.
Yeah.
We would make sure.
So you don't expect a heavy meeting on first meeting in May, then?
Right.
Okay.
Don't think so.
That's the 5th?
That is the 5th of May.
The 12th.
12th.
I'm sorry, the 12th of May.
So from my experience, the last time, it went on for quite some time, it, it would be best to have a special meeting specifically for this, and really give some time to focus entirely on that and not on the other items, I think it would be...
Well, since this room's always reserved on Tuesday, the 5th, the 5th is available.
I'd rather do it sooner than later, the 5th works good for me.
I think the 5th will be better. That way, we'll have all the time, because, you know, dedicated to that.
And if we need to, I mean, we've got a room that's upstairs, it's perfect for another meeting as well, if we need...
Well, you might have a lot of people here, so I'd rather have it downstairs.
So Tuesday, the 5th, but we're not going to hold back on the, going ahead and getting the advertising done, right?
Commission Donovan, you're good on 5th?
Yeah, I can do my 5th.
Good.
Karen, that worked good for you on the 5th.
Yeah, as long as, I'm assuming Tarpon Arts doesn't have anything in here, that's the only group we'd have to check with.
If we have to, we go to the TV room.
Okay.
I just want to let you know that I'll have to have another attorney from my office cover it, because as you know, on the opposite Tuesday of this, I have Oldsmar commission meetings, so, so I'd be happy to have one of the other lawyers cover it, and we can get it done. It's not a big deal for another lawyer to cover it.
Right.
So April, I mean, sorry, May the 5th is the day that we're shooting for, for the CRA meeting?
Yeah.
Be at 6:30. Yeah, 6:30 start time still?
Same time.
6:30, okay. And then we'll have the cutoff, at least 10 days prior to that, we'll let you know once we figure out the advertising, just so you...
I just have a comment real quick. I mean, I enjoy working with you, Tom, and I trust you, and it's not, I don't trust other attorneys from your office, but you seem to know the code quite well. I mean...
Again, we got that room upstairs, we want to do a different day than a Tuesday for the attorney, I mean...
Would it Wednesday night, the following Wednesday night? I'm not sure, when Citizens Academy starts next?
What are the chances of you having another attorney from your office cover the Oldsmar meeting, Tom?
I don't do that, okay? When I have a regular commission meeting with my commission, I focus on them, and so when my other cities change a date or add a date, you know, that's the open door for another attorney to cover it. So I, I don't feel comfortable, I wouldn't do that to you, I wouldn't on a regular meeting.
Yeah, that's fair. As long as that's the case, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'd treat it all the same. When you have a meeting, I'm going to be here. When you change a meeting, I'm not necessarily going to be here, so. So I can be here on, on the 12th, for sure, or get another lawyer to cover on the 5th, on a Tuesday, or I'd be happy to look at any other nights, I've got my calendar open, if that's what you like. I'd be happy to look at other days.
Is there a problem if we meet on the 6th, which is Wednesday? Are you okay on the 6th?
That, that might be an issue for me.
Okay.
That's my, that's my finals week, so I don't, I don't really know what my schedule's going to be.
What about Thursday, the 7th?
I'm, I'm not sure. It just depends on the night, depends on how they schedule.
Final schedule, you, you don't know what the schedule's going to be like for those examples.
I can't do it on the 7th. All right.
Can you, what about the 4th Monday?
The what Monday?
Monday the 4th?
Monday the 4th.
That's HPB.
Huh?
That's, that's the Heritage Preservation Board meeting.
Downstairs here?
Yes.
I, I can't make that.
You can't make that either? Okay.
So it's a 4th, or it's a 5th or the 6th, and then Commissioner Donovan has an issue on the 6th, so it looks like we're sticking with the 5th?
So you, just to make sure that you understand, we're going to pick the date as the cutoff based upon when we can get our advertising in, and we at least have a 30-day window. So we have a little bit of leeway with the rest of you, then, is that okay? Yeah? Okay. All right, that's how we'll figure it out, then.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we need a motion for that?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, since we don't need a motion for that, that concludes the agenda tonight. Do we have any, any more staff comments?
Just one thing, I forgot to mention at the prior meeting, I wanted to let you know that we just recently had a hearing, I think I, I provided the documentation to everyone here about the surplus dollars that we had.
Yeah.
I provided the check to Irene tonight, it was for roughly $67,000 recovery on some abatement liens and code enforcement liens on the Judy Moore Pettit property. So that, that issue has been closed at this point, and obviously, those funds will be placed wherever the city manager puts those funds, I imagine it's your general fund? Yeah, so that'll be added to your budget, then.
Nice.
And I'll just note that note was going on before our city, that, that case and getting a settlement on that thing is well over 10 years going on, that we never thought we'd get resolved, and getting 67,000 is just amazing, to get that nuisance in Oakley Village that's been a nuisance for 12, 13, 14 years, to get that done, and then get that kind of money back.
Nice.
Long, long process sometimes, but it's come to fruition.
So that's all I had, so, thank you, I just wanted to let everybody know that.
Are there any more comments?
We got a couple. Yeah, just to reiterate, I know multiple commissioners and the mayor brought up, the parking garage within the CRA is needed. I hope to see something brought forward before the next budget season kicks off for some allocations, and at least conceptual plans of where it could go. And if funds need to be set aside this coming budget year in 2020, and then also planned for 2022. I know interest rates are low also, so I think we, within the CRA, we should be able to get pretty creative on addressing a pretty big need, which is parking within the downtown district. A couple of things I want to follow up on, too, I know Karen came back pretty quick with the, the grant, the grant language for the, within the CRA. I know there's, we also discussed about the clock and then the archway over the trail. I wasn't sure if the city manager has any updates on, about those two at all, and when we're going to see maybe some further information.
Right now, one of the concentrations I'm working on is the, is getting ready to go for the archway of the docks, so I was working on that first, and then next in my line, which you'll hopefully see soon, we're going to put out a quest for proposal or something like that, looking at some plans for the archway, it may be the same process, we look at something across there for the CRA, if we look at with the process, and since we've got someone local who we know is going to make a proposal on it and stuff, so that's kind of, that's kind of where that one's at.
Okay, thanks.
And the clock, we should be ready, we should be ready with the new board to bring back some ideas and a couple places to load, we should be able to do that pretty fast. The list, all the list of things that you decide on the CRA, we're actively working on and getting going, to bring back those items that we went through, electricity for the uplining, all those things we talked about, the departments responsible are actively doing that, and you're going to see those coming back real soon in the new commission year, that's going to start up in April, so.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments? If not, that concludes the, the CRA meeting tonight, 10:15 PM. Good night, everybody. Good night, everybody.